As much as it is, okay.
Well, if I have time to explain the next one. I'm gonna briefly do it so you can ponder this. Fund eighty forty nine has always been landfill provision, or that's what it was referred to in the audit reports too.
Right, but then it had to get changed, right?
No, it did not have to. I don't know why it got changed to operational. This is a restricted fund. Operational assumes.
Cause I thought Shannon met with Sherwin and then some other people and then it had to be adjusted because
Well.
if I remember correctly, I'd have to look back then.
If you look at the audit report, it calls it that.
Yeah, but then it had to be changed from after the audit report, yeah. But then it was one of the things that needed to be changed.
That was in September of twenty twenty one.
Mm-hmm.
Audit report came out after that, so I'm not sure why, but.
I remember Shannon tapping my mouse, so I'd have to look at my notes.
You remember from all these?
One thing that I suppose, and the way I disagreed on it, she said, if we use that money for like, let's say, six years, she'll set up.
On the, on the, the, like, king of the drum.
Mm-hmm.
We can use that money. I said, well, yeah, I can't. And that's where I disagreed on it.
Gotta work outside.
You should restrict those funds. According to law, certain value. We got two tractors at the end, they're gonna issue.
Mm-hmm, cause she had, well, cause she had met with Sherwin about it, something like that. So I'd have to look back at my notes again.
That's, that's anything.
Sherwin's our engineer, right?
Yeah.
He's not.
No, but she met with Sherwin and then she met with a guy at the state.
Up a dinger, right, and trying to.
And they had fingers out that it had to be this and that. They had to be the two different funds.
So that's huge.
You ready now? All right, nine o'clock. Nine o'clock, let's call this meeting a Mercer's Mercer County Commission to order. Is there any additions to the agenda?
If it's too hot.
You don't want it.
Mister Chairman, yes, there are. Underneath treasures report, I want to include landfill fund eighty fifty.
Eighty fifty.
Right, and transfer from fund twenty nine seventy five. She, she might bring some information down. And underneath the win ordinance, there are some corrections. I did find one and I called Alice, and I believe she's got that, but I found two more this morning, Alice. So we'll have to review those.
Okay.
And under the budget, these are all very brief. I would like to add review non-normal re- under eleven forty five, review non-normal revenue. And that's just to bring the board's attention to funds that we have in our general fund. That aren't typically there.
Okay.
That's all. I'd like to add those. And I move that we approve the agenda as recommended.
Okay, motion by Marv to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second, Mister Chairman.
Second by Wayne. Any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Approval of the minutes, uh, July twentieth.
I was maybe where on page three, it should be county rowan twenty instead of eighteen.
Cool. Twenty twenty, okay. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes with that correction?
Some move, Mister Chairman.
Motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Corrections or additions? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
An all vote aye, that motion passes. Our favorite part, review and approve those.
I didn't get any.
While they're coming here, I think I'll just show this to Alice and let her guess. She might be able to fix the problem, I ask.
Mysteriously landed.
It wasn't the June one meeting that twenty seven, because he made, he made recommendation.
Tired today, Dan?
Dan can take a snack.
I was, um. I was checking fence the other day, yesterday, and like, it's electric fence, I'm like touching it, I'm like, oh crap, it's grounded somewhere.
Can you date the top of them, do you know which ones?
Find a spot where it's kinda wrapped around.
Right on the top, or on the bottom.
I'd have plugged it. Figure it out.
Yeah.
So that one would show to other people less.
Right, you're like, God, I'm hooked.
Yeah, I say it works. Yeah, cause I did, what's that?
She's gonna edit those very small titles.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And give us a good copy with today's dated term.
Oh.
Perfect.
Actually, one of them was a little small.
An extra zero attached to it?
A decimal in the wrong spot can be bad, you know?
Yeah, in either direction.
Both, both of these were like that.
I had a math teacher, she had a pet peeve, when you'd go to a grocery store or someplace like that, and they'd have, um, scents, but then they'd put a decimal on front of it.
Can I get five loads?
And she's like, well, here's Penny.
Can't believe size score you and they call chunks to us.
That's why you brought that up the other day, a memory for you.
Yeah.
But I, I haven't searched and seen what I could do, and I will someday. I don't think we.
Well, you don't have the preliminary.
He claimed that the law, that they can do it.
I don't know, when's it due?
He can do it, but he gotta cover it up. I don't think people would score you open on a federal.
I remember you really being serious about that.
Yeah. Either Friday or early next week.
Can claim, well, I taught at Rayhorn, well, I don't care who you talk to.
No, I mean.
I've never.
We didn't have anything to review, didn't have anything to study.
We don't wanna lose our funding.
Well, cause somebody asked me if we were gonna approve the day and so I.
Exactly, and why would the public have to run through crap?
Liza and I were talking about that earlier.
I called her.
Well, caught up a damn tire, took tire two hundred bucks a throw, and, uh, and then down there, Bill Wright, or some of the whole recycled pavement, down in the slot hole down nearby Bill's, there's three people that go through here for the whole summer. I came around that way one day and I go, what is going on here? And now our roads they throw scurry chunks on. Recycle would have been great.
This is the one we talked about.
Right, be way better.
The scurry.
Way better.
Remember, we talked about.
I don't know the price difference on it, so.
Well, the, I don't know where they got that, the, and the.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, so we improved that.
So, we should, they're quite large.
Yep, that was actually rather inexpensive.
Yeah.
So there was a lot of it that they hauled in there, the, uh, you know, help hold the washboard issue, but. But I had a laugh when Candy says, if you want size score.
Based on this, we should just, uh, have the meet that.
I don't think that quite qualifies.
Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't qualify.
Have to have certain stuff. Not just sugar.
Not just sugar?
No.
Bread and water, you bet.
Okay.
This is quite, uh.
That's interesting.
Yeah, quite something to review.
That was a hot day that way, right?
Yeah.
Oof, John. When it was at ten o'clock in the morning, it was like.
It was already ninety, or whatever.
Fair.
Yeah.
I, when I walked the whole road with the, pretty, people gave photos of different people in the angles, I, I parked at the fair and walked all the way down to Main Street, grabbed a little walkie-walkie.
At least the walk down was downhill.
That was definitely, but it was still a little bit cooler.
Right.
When you're, I was asked to bring up, have an antique tractor, all eight international, and pull a flatbed with a bunch of kids on it. And it was hot that day, but those eight internationals don't have a few other walking on it, so gravity and convection.
Oh.
And, uh, one of the store owners at that time stepped out on the street and says, is she gonna overheat? I thought, wow, this guy's driven one of these before.
Yeah.
And she worked just fine. I remember climbing the hill by the stool. The actual over by the church, I think it was around the, one of those.
Yeah.
And those old tractors had really, really bad brakes. So if everybody slowed down and stopped.
Oh, no.
It's gonna have some jacking if you lift the brakes too. Nobody stopped. I got no close to the car further than that.
Yeah, that Sunday was the last day of livestock showing, and kids had pigs. I was drinking water all, all morning and just sweating, and got home. I said, these guys, I lost two pounds this morning. It was even after drinking like a gallon of water, so you can imagine how much it came out.
Thank you for being a thorough job.
It's all mishmash, you know, it's kind of like all these different improvements and kind of a pain.
Oh, man.
Grand hotel must not do a grand bill.
Guess not.
It's good to know.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Alice.
Thank you.
Don't appreciate.
This must be manual payment?
Yeah.
The towel?
Yeah, those changes have to be approved for the board. I can't just tell you to change something. I'll do this up right.
Okay.
It's called manual revenue.
And that, of course, is just for the towel and not for the actual outfitting and all the lights and bells and whistles you gotta put on it.
All the extras, yeah.
That goes through a different company.
Thanks, Mom. Or we just pay that on, if we don't lease, yeah, if we don't lease it.
We are paying it. Right. So that should be the last on that.
Until we fill it, we'll fill all the.
Right, right.
Liza, where'd they use citrus first for? I think you told me that was before.
That's like a.
Air freshener.
Like a cleaner, or like an air freshener.
Yeah. It's like a little can that you stick in restrooms and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all it is?
Yeah.
I thought it might have been something you would want, worse one.
No.
Uh, I mean, maybe you could, but.
They throw it at you, right?
They throw it at you as, as they tell you, you stink.
Right.
Thanks for dating that. Huh? Oh, absolutely. Digging through your files, which one's the most current? Cause I think we have like four of these already, something like that. But that's just part of the process, right?
Yeah.
We have design and we have preliminary design. And we have construction.
Mm-hmm. Keep it all separate. Sherwin's been having a lot of AC issues.
I wonder why.
Thank you.
We got more today.
All right.
Yeah, it, I think it's just, it sounds like it was just low on refrigerant, but it's, it's quite a process to, to get anybody, because they're all busy within busy, yeah.
Get done. Mm-hmm.
So we're pretty happy to have this in our, in, in, where our servers at in electronics.
I think that makes it so much, just a little better.
They couldn't, couldn't get it, couldn't get it to.
I knew it was this month, I just didn't know what you.
It should set, so.
Yeah.
Is anyone new to Delma two hundred? Or Blightsley doing two hundred?
In where?
Chip Sue in, aren't they?
Oh, the, yeah, I think it's the Chip Sue.
I would assume that's what they're doing, yeah.
Yes.
Where, where are some stuff? I was like, I was like, you gotta be a little more specific, two hundred's a big road.
Could be two, prepared to a fuel A's and.
Yeah, cause they did.
Are we going east to A's or? I always thought it was just from A's and to fuel lot, but I saw like the. So it's gonna end the road over the side of the crossroads this morning, so they're gonna borrow a piece.
Yeah. I think so.
Forks for return, those forks for the tape, I can't hear.
Yeah, must be.
All right.
You can eat it by hand, or?
That's detailed.
Yeah.
Here there's no way to. Morning. You're walking in kind of shyly this morning.
Just the sun's shining.
Taking this with a picture and then.
Right, like, and I'm like, why are we here too, and then Owen's June and one's July, so.
The chairman of the day hired a fourth day assistant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, started. It was before the fair.
I was like, I think it was right before the fair.
Yeah, kinda when they needed her the most.
Right.
I haven't met her yet.
Neither have I.
I knew there was something to do with looking at this.
Glad I don't need tires many times.
I was looking at it like, oh, Jesus. Semi tires are not cheap, apparently.
Well, those are semi tires, but.
Yeah.
Regular auto tires, probably tuck in two hundred and some dollars a piece.
The fuel price doesn't kill you, the tire price.
Right, so when I see a teenager squeal his wheels, I'm like, ooh, he's not paying for fuel, where is it?
Right, you know how much money that is?
Dad was called, wasn't he?
It's the perfectly.
Morning, back in my.
Right.
Usually they come inside to cool off, but today's a fairly cool day out there, isn't it?
So far.
So far.
It's early.
Yeah, so far.
I thought we already had a plasma cutter, we didn't?
Uh, I guess I don't know.
Yeah.
Probably table at eighty, I think.
Kinda remember.
I thought we had one first.
And then the next day.
Does anybody know where we are regarding burn ban?
I haven't heard anything.
We haven't heard, I mean, we canceled one at the end of last year.
Nothing's in place at this time.
I think anything goes, yeah.
Anything goes. So when anybody calls me, who do I talk to? Well, Wayne said he'd take your.
The Wayne, yeah. Nothing goes.
Wayne would understand this. This year was so wet, I couldn't spray my weed, it seemed like it was raining all the time. So I've got a major outgrowth of wormwood.
What's that?
Prior to them going to seed, I've been towing them, planting them in my arena.
Oh.
I've been burning.
That, that wormwood works good for, uh, it, it, no, it's a good, good snow fence in the wintertime, it catches all the snow.
Salin.
Yeah.
So, I think I should get a grant from university and we'll try to figure out how we can cross wormwood with alfalfa that's chewable to the cows.
Oh, okay.
All right, you can let us know when you got that through, okay?
Yeah.
Wayne's second career.
Yeah, my second career.
Right?
Dr. Wayne.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you're right, um, uh, this year wormwood is just insane. It just, it cropped up in spots that I haven't ever seen it before, it just.
So anyway, I wanna burn it.
I was riding with my dad the other day, and we're driving by, and we're in McHenry County, and he's like, look at this guy. He swaps and then picks up wherever he's got spurge and then puts it back down. Do you think he could just spray it and then hate the whole thing?
Yeah.
So there's patches all over the field, cause he just, he didn't wanna bail it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
They didn't wanna treat it either, so.
Yeah.
So he's just, he does not lose spots, we'll grow now, right?
Right.
He might spray the regrow, though, that might be the answer. That'd be the time to do it, I suppose.
Spurge in our county, quite grew for this last year.
Yeah.
You're a little behind, Liza.
I am.
Sorry. Dean did like four or five last meetings, so, does that much of spurge you remember?
I just kept thinking, like, you gotta get those, you gotta get those. I just kept thinking, like, you gotta get those, you gotta get those, I'm like, oops, oops, and I'm like, well, now I'll do it before I did the change.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Cindy, you've got quite a bit on you agenda today, don't you?
I know, I don't know if you can handle it.
Well, it's a good thing.
It is a good thing, I'll take it.
What's coming? Right? Before or after? You say like that for Sam?
Here he is.
Do you know how close we're getting to getting prepared for the reversion, or is it you?
Yeah.
Is this the last one?
Yep.
We're just curious.
Must be.
That's it?
That's it.
Keep sending.
We'll be like, where's the sheet for? What department this is coming out of?
Yeah. I'll circle it, Jim. Who do they pick to retirement watch? Any idea? Okay, just curious.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I moved to approve the bills as presented.
Motion by Marv, is there a second?
A second.
A second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Moving on to zoning, Cindy, you're up.
Uh, zoning case twenty-two oh seven oh one is an application for a conditional use permit for a non-farm resident from Brian Dischak. It is a two point five five acre tract located within the north half of the northeast quarter of section twenty-four, township one forty-four, range eighty-nine of the fifth principal, Meriam Mercer County, North Dakota. Uh, P and Z did recommend approval on July twenty-first. Um, with the condition that present and future owners are responsible for snow removal and maintenance of the private roads and approaches. Septic system must meet Custer Health district standards and provide school bus turnaround if needed. Approach approval from highway superintendent and county makes no assurance for the passability of the unimproved section line leading to the residence. Landowner will be responsible for expenses of future improvements of the section lines, subject to prior, prior approval of the county. Um, he isn't here, but Marv is familiar with the, the area, right?
Really familiar.
And it seems like he had everything in order, it was his parents' land.
Right.
And so now he's just requesting actually put a home on that land?
Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna move a manufactured, the way it sounds, not build new.
Oh, okay.
Went by the other day and the culvert's installed on the approach. The road is pretty well built and the spot is leveled where the house is gonna be set, there was a dozer sat there doing this work, so.
Oh, now I know where this is at.
Yep, yep, you go right by it.
I go by it all the time.
Yep, you go by it all the time, yeah.
I was wondering what was, I'm like, hmm.
Now you know.
No.
Yeah.
Does Cindy know about this? Yeah.
Right, I'm like, I don't know if they could be doing that yet.
Well, you did tell him there shouldn't be a problem, but.
For discussion, I moved to approve zoning case twenty-two oh seven oh one.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Liza, any discussion?
Oh, it seemed like he had everything in order. If you looked at the drawing, the radius looks tight for like a turning around for school bus. He said that's all, be just fine. I didn't walk it, but I know the area very, very well, and I know where he's building, it's pretty high up and everything looks good, he said he had, uh, he's actually gonna get southwest water.
Okay.
And, uh, had checked with Custer Health. Everything's in order, the board approved it, planning and zoning approved it, and that's all the discussion I have.
Well, we normally put in there the stuff about the section line, but he's not, he's coming off the county road, so we won't have to worry about any section line improvements.
And he didn't have the approach approval from Ken already, he didn't get that from us.
Yeah.
He got it from Ken already, okay.
Cause there, there's a culvert laying in there and covered up and everything, so. I would imagine road superintendent had to go out there and inspect it, so, yeah. Looked, looked good.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. That's all you got, Cindy?
That's all we got.
All right.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
There you go. Um, let's go down to the other business, um, Blue Cross Blue Shields dental and vision renewal?
Um, yes, the Blue Cross Blue Shield was here and there's no changes in our dental vision rates.
Okay.
That's right, so it's just a renewal and then we give it for two years, so it just needs approval from the commission to go ahead and sign that and continue Blue Cross Blue Shield's denture vision.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the renewal?
Oh, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Thank you for bringing this.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Love those no increases.
Thank, thank, thanks so much for keeping it the same.
Right, appreciate the negotiations on this.
You got a box of cookies, it's gone.
Right. Um, auction house, social service building, grocery lot? I'm assuming that was just, we put that on there from the last meeting, haven't heard anything.
Cause we were hoping that the people would be bringing in.
Yeah, we put it up there, we have it in the paper and stuff, but we've never received anything yet.
And we haven't heard anything about the, the, um, social service building, like, nobody interested in?
Yeah, we considered pretty the sign up from that auction house lot, you know if anybody did?
I think Jim did, yes, I'm not sure, maybe ask Jim when he comes in.
Okay.
Okay.
We just kinda wanna keep that on the list?
Yeah, I suppose.
I think it would be, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's only been a couple of weeks, but.
Right, so I'd give it just a little bit longer, but we might have to take other action, it could be. If you could put it on the next agenda to your place, yes.
Okay, that one was easy. Primary election expense report?
Um, we did have two bills that came in yesterday, Monday, so I had an update for the expense report. So our total expenses for primary was twenty-nine thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy cents. So the cost per vote was eleven dollars and two cents.
Cost per vote received and counted?
Correct.
Because we had, I don't know, forty-some that we had to throw up for various reasons? And that should be the final on primary?
It should be the final one unless we accept this one.
Can you give me that amount again, it was twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy cents.
Oh, sorry.
Took me a minute to find it.
Right, there you go.
Versus twenty-seven.
Biggest number on the page. Yeah, that's the old, old report.
Right, oh. Did you, you got the new one, I put it in.
There's one in our packet, I think one.
Yeah, I think I grabbed the one out of the packet.
You should say right on top, it's two point two.
Found it.
Found it.
Thank you, Alice.
No, I believe these are already approved, we approved the bills, right?
I'm like, wait a minute, mine's not mentioned.
Yeah. Good thing you caught that.
Mr. Report. Mr. Report, okay.
Nice report there, Alice, thank you.
Thank you, Alice.
So I'm assuming, uh, November one will be similar?
Probably, or even maybe a little less, just to finish off, because we won't have all of, more, I know it's probably gonna be more.
Good, yeah. Oh, yeah.
As I say, you don't have all the city stuff, but you still have all the state and county stuff, so.
Right.
And I think that there's a referendum on the ballot for marijuana, so that way increase.
Oh, you're probably pretty accurate on that.
Oh, yeah.
Very true statement.
Yeah, I was gonna, you might have the same thing I'm thinking, go ahead.
Speaking of the election, I've sent letters to Todd and to several different, couple of different places. We do still have that question regarding the levy amounts that we can levy for road funds. I would like that put on our agenda for our next meeting, please.
Yep, I think we need that.
We really have to be on top of that.
Yep.
Imagine, we're the only county, as you've seen in association county books, that this failed.
Yep.
They had it all listed down there, Mercer County.
I think there was twenty-five counties that went for it.
Yeah.
We were one out of twenty-five that didn't get it.
So.
And I'm not saying that it was overly approved at other counties, but.
I don't know, well, we had the percentages kind of there, I mean, it looked pretty good in a lot of them, but. We may have to, I think we gotta do.
We need to do some education possibly.
Thank you, I think we're, we have to do some education so that. Campaigning or something. The public understands what we're trying to do and why.
Yeah.
So, next meeting, please. Is that what you had on mind?
Yep, that's what I was, like I said, I think we're thinking the same thing. Um, got a couple of minutes here. I didn't have it on the agenda, but I was just gonna throw it out there, annual conference coming up in October, so if anybody hasn't signed up that's wanting to go. Alice, are you handling that, or, or will it be Gwen?
I'm not sure, it'll be, I, we have to find myself, so, I'll let you know, I'll send, once you guys know.
Cause there's, is there a cutoff time as to when you can get?
I think it's September first.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, I got a couple more minutes, um, portfolio updates, Marv?
Three things. Uh, one, I met with the road superintendent again after I presented all those numbers for our budget and asked him if he wanted to review it, and he did, and he sent the auditor some revised numbers that we're probably gonna go over today. Hopefully. Second thing, I had a virtual meeting yesterday with Custer Health, and that was, just had to do with name change. We're getting a little flat with the name Custer on our deal, cause we serve a lot of minorities. And they're not the only ones who's brought it up, so we're working with the company to get our name changed and hired a company, a consulting company to help us with that. It was a long meeting, it was very good. And the third thing with Custer Health, and I think it's August tenth. We have a meeting with the quorum of commissioners, virtual meeting, so please check your information from Custer Health that was presented two meetings ago, I think. And, uh, I believe August tenth, we're all required virtually to sign in. To, so we have a quorum of commissioners and a quorum of counties, and there's five counties. So, please note someplace that, check your calendars and get that time committed, so that we can move forward with that. It's a tough meeting to do, because there's so many counties involved and so many people, but a lot of phone calls that day, a lot of waiting, but if we can get it done the first time, it'd be great. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, I haven't met with any of my boards since the last meeting. Next library board meeting is the last Monday in September, and that would be the, we did our preliminary budget, but that would be when, um, they kinda set their final budget with everybody else, so. Other than that, Liza?
Um, basically with the ambulance board, we were really working on trying to figure out what we should do for insurance. I'm trying to figure out if we should go group plan or if we should stay individual, um, and we're gonna revisit that after we reviewed some of the information that we got from that, so that's a lot of what our meeting consisted of this last time. Um, I know the auditor's office is gonna have a little change, um, Alice is gonna be moving over to the treasurer's department. Um, so I, I believe that Sam would be looking at, um, employing or putting out information to employ another way there. And then I, I think you guys noticed that we, they, we did purchase a bunch of radios for the sheriff's department for Siren.
Yeah.
So that'll, that'll be a big chunk that hopefully gets taken care of, so we can start moving forward more on that transition over to Siren. That's all I know.
Okay, Wayne?
Um, uh, yeah, the, the weed board met the other evening, and, uh, we done our budget, and of course, we're a little concerned about where the chemical price is gonna be and where, how, how we're gonna do that, but uh, last year we were able to acquire a chemical in the fall, and they're looking at that real hard again coming this year, so it offsets our budget a little bit for the next year, and we got a good break on the chemicals, so we'll see how that all falls together. I see Steve is gonna be here, uh, for social service. Just a little touch, I'm sure he'll mention it, but he is gonna retire in the end of December. And he served for us for seventeen years, uh, as the director, and I will be kinda sad to see him go, because he, he done such a nice job with budgets and personnel and things just, and legislative type things, things just flowed really, really well, so it's gonna be really hard to replace him as a, uh, he had just vast knowledge, but, so he'll be here and I'm sure he'll mention that also. Uh, what else do I add to? Uh, I think that'll be it for, not time being Travis.
Okay, next, Wayne? Just in time, Wayne.
Yeah.
All right, next up, we got Jim, talking about maintenance issues.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Jim.
Um, I laid that interiors by France, um, sheets up on here.
That one that passed down?
You sit. These are, this, I called them, and this is, uh, updated, you know, the prices have gone up a little bit, so. This is the updated proposal. Just going through it again and see if you feel we wanna do some or all or part of this, we can do any or all, whatever we choose to do. Um, number one, explanatory, that's the dispatch center, that's replaced carpet and vinyl base. And, uh, if you add both of them up with the furniture moving and, uh, the carpet and, and vinyl base and stair nosing and such, that's seventy-five seventy-nine. Number two, you label the training room, that's the emergency operations center, that meeting room down in the basement. That's still got original carpet in from when the building was built. Um, and you can see that coming in at sixty-four fifty-four. Number three is actually Carmen's office, that's the nine-one-one office that's connected to the emergency operations center. And that's fifty-seven oh eight. I just combined both of those, cause I think if we do one, we should do both, and that comes in at twelve thousand one hundred and sixty-two. Number four is the, um, that's the kitchen downstairs in the E O C room. That would, to be to replace the, the vinyl in there, the sheet vinyl, cause that's original also. Number five is the bathroom down there, and that's same, it's original sheet vinyl in there too, and it's getting pretty dull and dirty and stuff, and it's nothing you can do with it anymore, so. I just combined both of them and that come in at three thousand one hundred and eighty-eight. Number six is the two main bathrooms in the old courthouse here, that's the, by the treasurer's office and the break room right over here. Those still have the original, it's, they're the little square tiles, and they're, they've been with remodeling and such, there's different colors, we've tried to, you know, match, but it doesn't match too good, and they're kinda hard to clean, cause it's, you know, they're just getting old. But that's, that's for, just for the flooring in those two bathrooms, and that comes in at fifty-two eighty. And then seven and eight, that is to do with, in this conference room next door, it used to be the old jury room. And there is, that's the pink and blue bathroom. And there is, that's the pink and blue bathrooms, I call them, cause that's what they are, pink and blue. Number seven would be to replace the wall tiles in there, which are also pink and blue. That'd be take it off and put a new ceramic tile on there and new edging. That comes in at sixty-five, fifty-six, and then, of course, the number eight is the flooring to get rid of that. It's got the same type as these two bathrooms over here, so that's at thirty-two oh three.
And where's your budget at right now, Jim?
Okay, there was eighty thousand in the budget for building improvements. We, you guys approved the sewer pump project that was thirty-three thousand, or, yeah, thirty-three thousand, nine thirty. And that leaves us with forty-six thousand, seventy dollars left after that. My thoughts were if we do, at least do one through six. That total comes in at twenty-eight, two oh nine. If we do that, that leaves us, it'll leave us with seventeen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars in that line item for just in case stuff with this other project, you know, if we run into something, I, I think it might be wise to, leave a little bit in there in case something else comes up.
The email we got about the sprinklers, what was that taken out of, what budget item was that?
That is, uh, it's, the sprinklers in, that's the building sprinklers, just to clarify. It's the fire sprinkler system. That is gonna come out of building maintenance, so...
Oh, okay.
So, that's a maintenance.
That's a different budget line item, correct? Okay.
So, if we do all eight of them, just so you know, I figured that out too, we'd have eight thousand, one hundred and two left if we do all eight in that line item. Number one is desperately needed, for sure, and the rest, I guess, it's up to you how much we wanna do or how little, or... I know Marvin's looked at it, and I think Wayne's seen a lot of it too, so... So, I guess...
Well, yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, like Jim says, I, I think we wanna prioritize what we definitely have, and that's, that's definitely the dispatch area, and, uh, from there, uh, probably a couple of projects, and, and definitely have some reserve left over. I mean, uh, that's because there's always something that can happen, and, and, uh, and these guys, they're gonna be around. They're not going nowhere, so...
Jim, what building fund number is that? I didn't bring my sheets with me.
Oh, I didn't bring my sheet, I don't think. Let's see. That'd be one zero zero one, forty-one, six, ten, uh, four forty.
We add something every, I don't have the budget in front of me again, but that sheet might show you there. How much did we add to the building fund every year for building maintenance? Was it fifty thousand?
Okay, that's a different line item.
It is?
Yes. That is, we budgeted last year, and that was put into the four thirty-eight.
Which is defined, read it.
That's the one you put money in, and then it gets transferred into the building fund.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, I'm gonna agree with Wayne partially. Number one, I don't want to approve anything today. This is Marv speaking only. I don't wanna approve anything today till we review everything on the budget. Cause there is a possibility we might wanna use some of these funds for the buildings improvements that were already being done, rather than spending all of the ARPA money. But I do agree that, uh, what I would like to, what I'm leaning towards is do number one, that dispatch area. Get that repaired. And the other ones, review those as we review the budget. Do all of it. We have to review the budget, but I'd like to include number one in the budget, for sure.
The only thing I see on here is that the budget's already increased because of kinda delaying it a little bit, and it's only good for fourteen days, which is really common currently, because prices are changing daily.
Just drastically changing.
Yeah, it was a few hundred dollars for each, each line item on this proposal that it went up just in, since April.
And this has to do with the budget that we already have.
What's that?
This is, uh, with our current budget.
Right.
It's not our proposed.
Twenty-twenty-two, there's eighty thousand in there.
Yep. And I concur with Wayne and Marvin that I, I do think that we definitely need to do number one. I mean, I don't think there's any question. We need to make sure that the dispatch area is taken care of. We don't wanna have any incidents up there due to the flooring.
What's that?
We don't wanna have any incidents, any accidents or anything like that due to the flooring conditions or something happening with that, too.
No, they're pretty solid. They're just getting old and...
And just have good conditions for the staff.
Right. Yeah, they deserve to have a good work area.
But the dispatch is kind of getting to be a safety hazard, cause those tiles are...
That's what I mean. Like, I don't want anybody tripping or anything happening, cause they're peeling up or anything like that.
Cause they're really getting worn out, and you can't even, they're so bad it's pushed down, they can't even vacuum it decent anymore. There's nothing there.
I move that we approve item number one in its totality of seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Okay. Motion by Marv to start with the number one item for a total of seven thousand, five seventy-nine. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Liza. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
All right, that motion passes. I think, we'll probably discuss it later in the meeting, but if we have a special meeting, we could definitely add this to it. We might have a meeting later this week or early next week, um, so if we have the budget numbers, we possibly might approve more of it.
Okay. I'm gonna need you to sign that then, and I'll have to note on there that we're just doing number one, probably.
Probably.
Cause we gotta put half down, I see on here, on the sheet for...
We could sign it, and then I'll initial next to number one, and then just let them know we might approve additional parts of it.
Okay.
Within, within the fourteen days, but...
Okay.
Within their time limit.
Within their time limit, but they could definitely get that going.
Okay. All right.
Anything else on this one? Do you have anything else, Jim?
Uh, I was gonna cover my budgets.
Sure.
Quickly. Just in case you had any, cause I was absent the last time when you went over them all. Do you have your budget sheets or not?
I brought mine.
I did too, but...
I'll peer over Travis's shoulder here.
I got building and grounds one, and janitor, and risk management. It's three of them. The building and grounds is one zero zero one, forty-one, six, ten. I don't know, there's no page numbers on here. There used to be page numbers.
Is it in here, though?
Oh, it might be page seventeen.
Here's risk management. It's all put together. Yep, building and grounds, so it's all put together. Starts with janitor on top.
There we are.
Okay.
Which one are we on, building and grounds?
Yep.
Okay, I, uh, just so you know, from last year, or this year's budget for next year, what some of these are, the four-ten line, I increased it a little bit, cause if, uh, we're gonna be running that yellow dump truck, I just, I just don't know what to say.
Yeah, we've already had a couple of incidents with that, yep.
So, I added that, and price of things are all going up, and...
Can I interject just something here real quick for the board? I don't know, uh, he's got that, just something to think about. He's got that sanding truck that he looks like he's probably trying to move out. Well, I know that sanding truck is a way better truck than that old yellow truck, because they got that engine out of that school bus that time as a thirty-two oh eight. So, if you ever wanna shell something out, I would say keep that sanding truck that, that, uh, that he can't want it to move here, and move that yellow bumblebee truck, because that, that's just, uh, a date, today, where I know that other truck is a lot more stable, so, just something to consider, okay? Sorry, Jim.
Okay, that's what I did there. Uh, supplies, just janitorial supplies left at the same. Of course, fuel prices went up, so I increased that one a little bit. Uh, renovation county properties, I have no idea. That's a guess. I, the auditor and treasurer probably know more about that one. I just put forty thousand in case there's a property comes back we need to get rid of or take care of or whatever. Uh, future building improvements, that one I left up to Samantha. Uh, she was gonna run all the numbers and see what we could put in there. That, like I said, that's the money that, what we put in there gets transferred to the building fund for future stuff. ADA, I don't see any. Okay, the building improvements ones that we had talked about earlier with core facility, and when we met with Wayne and Samantha here right before budget season, they come up with, uh, we'll probably do the, look at doing, replacing the boiler system in the old L A C is our next project, so... That's where that number come from. Just so you know.
I see boiler, right?
As we...
In the old L A C, right?
Cause then, uh, in future years, we'd look at the cooling, the old, you know, chillers and all that, and then there's a reheat, we, you know, this is all stuff we talked about, kinda splitting it up, and... So, that's where that number, building maintenance, I kinda left that the same. I've got, out of that, there's like twenty thousand in service contracts, and then about eighty thousand for whatever comes up. Outside maintenance is for sprinkler system, anything in the shop, things like that. Purchase equipments for like vacuum cleaners or things like that for the janitorial department. Tires, I just put a thousand dollars in case, you know, we have something with any of the equipment we need to get tires for. So, any questions on that?
On the tires, is that like regular auto tires or...
No, it's be the Bobcat, the truck, lawnmower, things like that.
I was just wondering if a thousand's enough. We just had four tires come through that was almost nineteen hundred bucks.
Yep, they were huge tires, but...
They, they were semi-tires.
Semi-tires, but...
I know we have that yellow truck. We got a bunch of used ones left, but...
Okay. Oh, that's kinda the one I'm concerned about.
Yeah, we got some sitting behind the shop. They had laying over there, so we just kept them, and...
Yeah.
I don't know how many are left. I think we went through a couple already, but...
We're close.
Yeah.
We'll run on fave. That's how you gotta farm every day, run on fave, so...
Any other questions on that one?
On that one?
I have a question on there, just for my curiosity. Renovation of county property, line item four thirty-five. Twenty-one, we're spending forty-two thousand. What was that expense on?
What's that?
Um, for item four thirty-five, renovation of county property.
Yep, yep.
So far, we've spent forty-two thousand.
That's for tearing the old store down.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
And that's for utilities. When we get a property back, all the utility bills come to that, and...
Then if you got asbestos, this...
Asbestos and all that stuff.
Beautiful thing.
We have another building to take down yet, too, right? Old grocery store, right?
In the works, I think.
That's the one that we're waiting to hear if they'll purchase it or not, so we don't have to...
There's another one, too. There's bomb shelter or something?
No. Oh, that was in that old store. That's, that's done.
That's gone.
That's taken care of.
That's done, yeah. Just, just your auction house.
Good. We're kinda catching up then.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Janitor one is, I think, page eighteen, the next one. Okay, the, the first line is other salaries. That's for all my employees, three employees that work in my department. Now, I had put a figure in there that is lower than this year's, and from what I was hearing in here in the last meeting, when you, there was budget talks with other departments, I'd like to see that stay the same as this year's until we figure out...
So, you wanna change that one?
The, the process of when someone takes a job, what their salary should be according to...
So, you're proposing that one seventeen get changed to one sixty-one?
No, one, leave it at one seventeen. I'd like to see it at, instead of the one oh nine.
Okay.
That's my biggest, biggest change on that one, but, uh, part-time, I don't have any of that. Pointed, that's mine. I just did the seventy-five cent increase on that. Payout, I just put a little bit in there, just in case someone leaves. Telephone, uh, let's see, the travel one per diem, I just put fifty dollars in case the maintenance pickup is down or something. I gotta use my own vehicle, or if I gotta go somewhere for a meeting or whatever. Uh, telephone, that's for both mine and Jason's cell phone and the office phone. Gasoline and fuel, I increased that a little bit again, cause of fuel prices, so... And the tires, I just left five hundred bucks in case, yeah, I have issues with the, that's for the maintenance pickup tires, so...
Buy one tire.
The tires are good on it right now, but if you get a blowout or something, I gotta replace a couple then, just in case, so...
And you got five hundred in education and training?
What's that?
You have five hundred in education and training?
Oh, yeah, that's, in case I send Jason to a training or something, I'd like to keep that in there, like, they have different seminars and maintenance items, so... And the risk management one, that's pretty much, I kept that all the same as last year, besides the salary change, and Samantha figured that out. I don't know how they do that, but with the seventy-five cents, she figured, figured that in there, so that's that increase, but everything else is pretty much the same, so...
Thanks, Jim.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, treasurer's report.
Morning, Darby.
Are you gonna be able to give us another report?
You might not like it, Wayne.
Well, I don't know. No, no.
As always, the first page is the balance sheet as of July thirty, well, twenty-ninth, the last working day of the month. So, and things are actually looking pretty good. And as you turn it over to this next page, you can see we're, we've still overspent thirty-seven thousand, one sixty-six, twenty-two. Money in, money out, receipts versus payments.
The Housefield fifteen oh five.
Yep.
When did we receive that?
That was in January.
January?
January, February, something.
It says are included in the total receipts in January you have on there.
Yep, that's what we have, yep.
Yep.
But, uh, I think we were supposed to receive some more American Rescue money in July.
We did, that's on there too.
Yep, that's seven ninety-five.
Seven hundred ninety-five thousand.
You're scared of read the word July on there, huh?
Yeah.
You have to read all the way to the end.
So...
I do that too.
If we take the total amount received to date of seventeen, two fifty-four, seven, five seventy-five...
Yep.
Help me out if I'm incorrect. The non-normal revenue is the two seventy-seven, the one, one seventy-five, and the seven ninety-five. And if you subtract those out, then what would our deficit be? I'm gonna do that right.
Okay, you go ahead. My calculator's done working.
Calculator went on vacation.
Understandable.
I don't calculate very well in my head anymore, anyway, just... Well, Donna's really good at calculating in her head. I, when you use a calculator all the time, it's very hard to...
Then you just get kinda stuck in that way, yeah?
Yes, it has to be pretty simple.
Well, these are some big numbers.
Yes, yeah.
If you subtract those numbers out, if I didn't punch a key wrong, it comes out to fifteen million dollars.
Okay, that's...
The receipts would be?
Our receipts would be fifteen million then.
Zero zero six, comma, five sixty-five. Now I'm gonna subtract the expenses. That puts us two million, two hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven. So, the reason I like to look at this is cause I firmly believe that our normal revenue sources should meet our normal expenses for the year.
I agree.
We should not have to rely on grants to meet those. If we're doing, we don't get a grant, we're not gonna meet our expenses, so... It's all preliminary, it's just numbers at this point, cause we have to know what our expenses are for and our revenue is for the rest of the year, but it gives us a feel of where we're at, so... That's why I calculated that out. So to date, our normal revenue is about two point two million dollars short of our normal expenses. But we still have revenue coming in. Okay, so that's, I'll just point that out. All right, thank you on that sheet.
Okay, you also wanted to discuss the, the other sheet here, Marvin.
Okay, first, do you mind if I...
You go ahead, I'll just... If I got something to say, Marvin.
Okay, the first thing I wanna point out is the sheet that I haven't handed you guys yet. And I sent a letter to the auditor and to the treasurer, cause I was curious. And I just want information on this, it's cause we're gonna get more information at our next meeting. So please put this down on agenda for the next meeting on the treasurer's report. Uh, we had a transfer out of our CD fund this year of forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars in January. It won't reflect in any of your papers. That was not a budgeted transfer. It's not on our transfer sheet, anything that I can find, but it occurred. And when I read the sentry code, it tells me that that requires board of approval to do that. So I just want you guys aware of that and, uh, I'll continue working with the auditor to see what that transfer was for. I don't know anything about it, other than I can see that it was, it occurred.
Marvin.
Go ahead.
Alice is indicating she knows what it's about, so...
That was to pay for the audit, for the twenty-one audit.
For the ex...
And that was approved by the commission to transfer the funds to create extra cost of that audit.
But that was recorded in January?
But it came out of that CD interest fund?
Yeah, cause, well, when you said CD interest fund, that, I was thinking audit, but I, the January threw me off.
Thank you for helping us on that, Alice.
Your letter to me didn't... Okay, okay, I received a response back from the treasurer's office, but I hadn't received your response yet. Okay, well, that answered that question.
Okay, then I'm gonna say something too, and I think Marvin's got some more to say on this. When we are transferring money, I do not know, I do not get...
You need to get memos or something, right?
I do not know what that is for, so when, I mean, when we're transferring money behind the scenes, I mean, we're transferring from one account to another account. Uh, that does not show up on the balance sheet unless I know about it. So those are things...
We need to fix.
You guys need to fix.
Okay.
It's not a good practice, I don't think.
No, would a, would a memo be the best?
Doesn't know what the left, memo to us or, um, actually an email to the treasurer's office.
An email would suffice, would that work okay?
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, something in range, just so that I can put it in.
Right.
Okay.
So you can keep it with that, and sometimes when they do do transfers, we actually can't do anything about it and say maybe for a month or two. Like sometimes when we're transferring money in our landfill account, when we're redoing CDs, they might transfer it at, at the end of the year, but I can't do anything about it until the following year. But I still would need to know that, or my office would need to know that.
Right.
Yep.
And it, it, I mean, it's been a practice that's been going on here, so it, this would be a really good time to get that straightened out and...
Well, it just, it seems appropriate that everybody should know, right, right, what's being moved around in those two departments, so, for sure.
Okay. One other item on this CD interest, there was an expense that I can't see that was budgeted for nine hundred and one dollars and eighty-two cents, and that's being checked on, so no...
It's solved, that was used to pay the specials for the city of Stanley. I found that out now that you requested me.
Oh, from the, the houses that we have, like the auction houses and stuff like that?
And they had specials on it.
Oh, yeah.
And we just did that on a, the per year special, we didn't do the total, we just did for a given year on the specials?
No, that, yeah, that was just what certified, I will go, I'll go with CD, so you guys have something.
Excellent.
The only reason I say that is cause if it comes, if we still have the properties, we might have, it would be associated with it.
Associated, would be great.
Yep.
I'm glad.
If we didn't pay them off, if the county didn't pay them off, it'll be a yearly expense.
Correct.
Yeah, which we need to expect.
Right, that we need to have addressed, yep.
So there's something to keep in mind in our budget as we go, that we have a line item for that, right?
That we put a line item in, you mean?
Someplace.
Something, one way or the other, yeah.
Cause this came out of a...
CD interest.
CD interest in it.
And I'm, I'm gonna say that I do not think you should be using our CD interest for, to, to balance the checkbook. But also on that note, there are some CDs, like the maintenance fund CDs, the landfill, the weed board. We used to put all that interest back in to those CDs, but in the last three or four years, Shanna has suggest, has put it all in this two-nine-seven-five, and I guess I just don't think that's the way we should be doing it. It should go back to this, cause the landfill has an account number, the building fund has an account number, and the weed board has one. But that interest should be going into those CDs or those account numbers and making it more, you know, adding the interest to that CD along with whatever we're putting in there.
So if it's not put in there, how do you balance your books?
Well, I get a check, and then that check is put in wherever auditor says.
Cause like on CDs, there's two ways to do it, you can capitalize the interest, which basically, what you're saying, puts it back in.
Right.
Or they send you a check every month or quarter.
I've always gotten a check, but we have, Donna and I have discussed doing it the other way, especially for the three that, you know, have an account number.
You said that was landfill, maintenance?
The building ma, the building and improvement one and the weed board, they're all on our balance sheet here. And we used to until, I wanna say, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, when they switched, you know, when Shanna switched doing that and putting it all into the two-nine-seven-five, so...
So you guys are recommending that CD interest be capitalized, put back into the fund that it was derived from?
For those, especially for those three that we have on the balance sheet.
And it seems like it would be easier to keep track of then.
The rest of them don't.
As to who got one?
Don't accrue, the rest of them are, say, like I have a three hundred thousand at, um, the Union Bank. Well, they send us the check and we put it in that two-nine-seven-five.
Okay, re, I only got two of them written down, repeat those three again.
Building and improvement, weed, board CD, and then the landfill loan account. And the landfill loan account really isn't a CD, it's a bank account, which...
Oh, okay.
Okay.
The other one is the American Rescue account. Right now, that interest capitalizes, but we account for it in that two-nine-seven-five. We would like to see that interest go into the two-one-oh-four account that is on the balance sheet associated with it. Just because it has an account, it has a fund. I don't see why the interest can't just go into that fund when it comes in rather than into a separate account.
You said it was two-one-oh-four, right?
Yeah, it's on the balance sheet.
That one's on the balance sheet.
Oh, gotcha.
Just, just good bookkeeping, basically, huh?
Right.
If they got funds, I just think the interest should go into those funds.
And it adds a little bit, I mean, right now, probably not a whole lot, but as our... It is great, it does add, like for Jim's building and improvement, it adds, you know, two, three thousand dollars a year to that.
Which is a lot to actually, I think.
And, you know, same with your weed and your, you know, it adds that amount to, you know, a couple hundred dollars every year to that CD or to that bank account, which is, you know, money in the bank, so to speak. It's extra money for them to use for whatever.
Well, and, and to me, it just helps us keep track of that money's better too, where we know it was specifically taken out of that one account for the building maintenance, it wasn't for others. So I do like that too.
I think it's a lot simpler tracking it, you know, because it, it stayed in that account.
Well, I don't think the landfill loan or the building fund or the weed board or this care's funding should go in to this two-nine-seven-five account, and then we're using it to pay specials in Stanley. That's not fair to these accounts.
Exactly, yeah, cause they're the ones who, that's what it's supposed to be specified for.
Right.
What terms are we doing on the CDs?
Most of them are a year, I've pretty much got a portfolio.
They're split from one year to five years.
Okay.
They're scattered, five, four, three, two, one. The, the local ones are mostly one year.
Sure.
Um, the ones that I've got with multi-bank, we've got right now with multi-bank are, um, anywhere from, most of them are from two to five. And we stayed under them enough so that if we had to get out them, we have some that were available sooner.
If absolutely necessary.
Well, with the, with the rate hikes, recently, there are some CDs that are going up.
The one that I just went out with multi-bank and I got the point two by, which is pretty awesome.
That is really good.
This is like three percent higher than it was.
Right.
Right.
Six months ago.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, significant.
And the other thing with multi-bank is even if we're, they only, um, do two hundred and forty-five or two hundred and forty-nine because...
FDIC, yeah.
Stay out of the FDIC.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but you can, if you only need eighty thousand, then that's all you have to withdraw from them is what you need. You don't give them away.
And you can leave the remainder in there and that.
Right.
Do they have any interest penalty when you do that, or?
I'm sure there is, I've never had to do that.
Okay.
It says there is, I've just, we've just never had to do that.
But it gives you the option.
But it does give you that option, yeah.
If we end up being in a...
Keep, keeping the interest to the interest-bearing account, to me, it's just good practice.
Yes.
And the first thing that jumps in my mind is the landfill. Their, their income is fee-based, and it's always a very tight budget, so taking their interest that they earn and moving it to the general, to whatever...
Benefit greatly, yeah.
To me, it's just wrong, we should leave it there.
Right, but I mean, we need to leave it with the landfill, so we benefit at the landfill, yeah.
And the same with the other one.
That one does.
Cause that one's a different setup, right?
Okay.
Because that's a regular bank account. Well, there used to be a loan, there used to be a loan, there was a loan on, it was before, I mean, when I came in too, we were paying off a loan.
Oh, okay.
When, you know, so it, it, it was always the landfill loan account, but, I mean, it's actually an actual bank account. I have no check, checks for it ever, we just add the interest, we've been adding the interest for many, many years. Um, and that's one of our issues too, where transferring was done and...
You guys weren't aware of it.
We weren't aware of it, so...
Yep, we need to do something about that.
Actually...
I agree with you.
Some of the transfers were a couple of years old even, right?
Dating back to two thousand sixteen is, uh, some transfers were made and I was just made aware of last year. So, I mean, our...
I, you're absolutely right, Darby, this is a good time to just make sure we get on top of that and make sure it's...
Okay, one, one other thing I have on this here, and this has to do with the bank statement, the dated cash balance bank statement that Darby gives us right here. If you look at, at the landfill loan account, that's actually fund eighty fifty, you might wanna write that underneath there.
It's eight zero five zero dash one one, one one zero dash zero zero zero.
So anyhow, her statement shows we have sixteen thousand in there. Per the audit report, at the end of twenty twenty, we had eighty-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-one point thirty-one. You might wanna write that on there. Eighty-two thousand, seven ninety-one point thirty-one, that's end of twenty twenty.
I think that's the total for this year.
And say, isn't that twenty-one?
I think that's...
No, that's per the audit report, the audit report was ended twenty twenty.
I thought what you showed me was twenty-one on it.
Hmm.
In your notes.
I'll get you that here in just a second. If I said twenty-one, I was there.
I'd say, I think you had it written out, is what you had, so...
See, this is twenty twenty audit. I'll get you that. So anyhow, what, what I, at the end of twenty twenty, it appears it was eighty-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-one thirty-one per our audit, independent audit report. So, I just want her bank, when we look at these sheets, that they're accurate. And, uh, some of this had to do with what Darby just described, where some transfers were, occurred, journal entries, and she wasn't aware of it for quite a while. So anyhow, I would like to get that reconciled, I would like to have that brought up to date. And I believe, you guys wanna take that money out of the ICS account?
Yes, that's how we're gonna handle it, yes.
I think she's been working with the audit.
Yeah, Sam and I am Sam and, oh, Donna.
Donna stepped out, but...
Yes, and, and that's the other reason, if you don't know about the transfer, no, I'm transferring money that was budgeted from two thousand sixteen, that's not right.
Right.
It's not right. So, when there is a transfer made, I need to know about it, especially if it's a budgeted. Well, I guess I, the office needs to know about it. But now we're taking money from this year's budget that should've been done in two thousand sixteen and seventeen and eighteen and nineteen. I mean, this is not the way...
So it's just a practice that we have to definitely...
Yep, we need to address. Yep, we need to address and make sure that it's.
Correct.
Yep.
So that's all I had on that is that, um, that could probably be added to the policy committee.
Oh, yeah.
This one I'm having already now is the.
I think that would be a good plan.
Eight zero five zero in the company, uh, as of January, July thirty-first, that's what was in the post-closure account, and that's eight zero five zero.
You said this was a post-closure. I see it now. Gotcha.
So I'm gonna write that number on the bank instead of that seven ninety-one. It should be eighty-seven, one eighty-four.
One eighty-four.
Seventy.
If we're gonna transfer and get it caught up, we may as well get it caught up to date.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
I agree with you, Don.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to do that, to make that transfer? I believe the board is supposed to do that.
I think on that dollar amount, we should probably.
You just said you do need a.
Um, yeah.
That's hard to do in there.
Yep.
I'm, I'm gonna see. I think I have that legal document here, but I know I do. Anyhow, I move that we. Allow the treasurer to transfer sufficient funds into Fund eighty fifty. Do I want to say a dollar amount? Don, should I put that, or should I just say sufficient funds to get the count up to date?
I think I would use the sufficient funds.
Okay.
Cause it's kind of over.
Yeah.
I move that we allow the treasurer to transfer sufficient funds to get landfill loan account Fund eighty fifty current.
Okay, motion.
Where, where, do you care where we moved it there or each one?
We talked about ICS.
Oh.
You said ICS.
So I can believe you.
Three seconds is all it took.
Yeah.
And maybe from the ICS account.
Maybe you want to state that it's from, for the landfill closure or post-closure account.
Yes, and we have changed that. But that changed already to, for that.
I mean, Marvin, your number is right, but we wouldn't know where that belonged to.
Yeah, that's one of the problems we have also. You might want to put in the policy that some of our funds have different names and different reports. It gets confusing.
Gets confusing.
Okay. Why, why do you go like that?
We just talked about that yesterday too.
Okay, okay. We got a motion by Marv. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second by Wayne. Any discussion on the moving the funds from the ICS account, uh, to correct the outstanding landfill post-closure account? Seeing no further discussion. Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
Does anybody here on the policy committee?
Thank you for getting this cleaned up.
Alice is.
Good job. Well, thank you for getting this cleaned up.
Yeah, I appreciate it and I will definitely work.
Yeah.
To make sure that we get those memos or emails over to you guys if anything's moved.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Marv, for Darby? I think we covered, you had a transfer twenty-nine seventy-five. Did we cover that?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
That was a CD interest where she, Alice explained it.
Perfect.
All right, are we good?
Thank you, Darby. Thank you for all the years' service and.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
All right. We've been hitting our times pretty well today. On ten-thirty, Brent Ekstrom. Or Lucy Clark.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's it doing? I got lots of paperwork for everybody.
Oh, we love paperwork town.
It's not kind of you have to turn in or anything, so it's all just information, so.
You should see our piles. We're trying to shuffle this stuff here.
You only have to look at once the, the biggest stuff in our brochure that you can give to people for all of our programs and stuff. The other stuff is, uh, it's kind of information for you guys, so.
That's why they put an eight-inch curb here so we can.
So you don't see all of it.
You don't see all the spreader back there. I know how this stuff goes. So I won't take up a whole lot of your time this morning. Just wanted to give you the deal of what's been going on within that market line, what we see coming up in the future here, so.
Whoa, that's a stout brochure. It's a stout brochure.
It keeps getting bigger and bigger.
Boy, it gets heavier, yeah.
Ridiculous how much it gets bigger and bigger.
Oops.
I need my stout brochure, please.
All right.
Brent, you'd skipped over me, so Wayne handed me. Yeah, so Wayne didn't get his.
What did he get?
Please.
He didn't get the brochure.
You're gonna have my.
I did, I thought, I felt pretty good because I knew.
Well, he gets out of work then, that's what he does.
I know. Not letting that happen.
Well, good morning again. Um, I'm Brent Ekstrom. I'm the executive director of the Lucy Clerk Development Group, um, out of Mandan. Servicing, uh, the region here in, uh, Region Seven here in North Dakota, but also a few of our programs are statewide. Just wanted to stop by, uh. To talk a little bit about what's going on, um, with the, uh, with the regional council, some of the stuff, the projects that we have coming up. And then, uh, um, a little bit about what we did, uh, last year and some of the COVID stuff that we did. So, uh, first of all, uh, I mean, your packet, I just gave, like I said, I gave you our brochure. Um, it's broken up basically into, into three different groups. There's our housing, there's our, uh, our regional programs that we do. And then there's also the five oh four program. So we do a lot of commercial lending and we do a lot of housing. Um, we basically are kind of structured so that we fill the gaps, um, in community and economic development. That's really what our goal is. Um, and so we work with banks, we work with economic developers, we work with city and county officials too. So when, when gaps come up in projects, we help to try to fill those. And as those, you know, with, with, over the last couple of years with the COVID and stuff, those gaps got bigger and, and, uh, bigger. And you could see the newest program that we've did, that we have now is we do property management, right, which, um, up until December of twenty twenty, uh, we didn't do that. And with the, uh, the closure of LSS, they had a number of properties throughout the state and they did property management on a number of properties that they both owned and, um, you know, for a third party. And the, the, the properties that we manage, yeah, we picked up a whole bunch of those and then we picked up other ones as well. Uh, but the properties that we manage are the ones that have subsidy into them, right? So they'll have HUD subsidy, um, they'll have USDA, um, more, maybe a little loan, housing tax credit and stuff. Uh, and so with that comes a lot of compliance. And so we're not out competing against management companies. So if there's a realtor that does management for, for market rate stuff around, we, we don't want to take their properties. We don't do market rate. We do the stuff that you have to send all the forms, you have to do income qualifications, you have to do all the fair housing stuff, all that kind of stuff, right? So that's really where our expertise is. Um, the thing is, it's a low profit margin, right? That's why the, that's why the, the, uh, the for-profits don't like to do it. So they're very, very limited. And so when they, when LSS left, there really wasn't anybody doing it. So we picked up that. We're already up over five hundred units across the state. So it's, there's a lot of it. So if you have properties, um, that you're aware of that need that type of management, um, and, and can't find it or, or. Or don't want to do it anymore, certainly have them reach out to us, right? So that's our newest thing that we, that we do. Um, we're not here to take over the world. I'm not, I'm not advertising and I'm not going out and knocking on doors and asking to manage your properties. Um, we basically are filling the gap, right? So.
Do you have any in Mercer County?
Uh, right now, I don't think we have any in Mercer County.
I think you were looking at one in Beulah, but I.
In Beulah, I, I got sold.
Okay.
That, yeah, so, like I said, um, yeah, the one over, yeah, the, uh, that's a nice apartment. We did look at that, but, um. Like I said, we're not here to take over the world. We're here to fill that gap. And if somebody else can do it, we're gonna let them do it, right? And so that's what happened in that, in that situation. I believe it's staying affordable and that's really what our goal is, is to have these properties stay affordable, so. Um, but there, I know there are several, there are small ones, um, and if they're having good management now, great, more power to them, right? We, like I said, uh, but anyway, that's one of the things we did. The other thing we did is we did get another revolving loan fund, uh, about a million dollars. Um, that came out of, out of some of the CARES Act money, uh, that has been deployed and is now revolving. So, um, you know, it's additional funds that are available to if you have small businesses that are looking at starting up, expanding. And then, uh, anything like that. Um, obviously, we work with the banks, um, to, to try to put those packages together. So certainly have them come on and talk to us about that as well. Uh, we do have a, uh, there is a project that's gonna be coming up here in Mercer County that we're. Um, it's part of the, uh, Department of Commerce came out with the Regional Workforce Impact Program, um, grant opportunities. And as a region, we are applying for that. And there's a number of projects. One of those projects here is in, uh, is in Mercer County. And so that will be, uh, hopefully getting, uh, the application goes in this month. Um, it's a non-competitive application, so we, we should be seeing that project starting up here too, uh, shortly. So, uh, we just did the scoring and ranking on that. And so you'll see those projects coming in as well. Um, and you know, really what we do is we like to go out and get, um, if there's funding that's available that fits within our mission and helps our communities, that's the funding that we go after. We don't, we don't go chasing money too much, but when it does like that, where it's a workforce thing, we're trying to build workforce, that's what we can go after, so. Uh, so that should be coming up here shortly, so you'll be seeing, uh, more of that. But, um, the other stuff I put in there, I just threw in our annual report. You should have got that, um, in the mail or you should have got that electronically. Um, you can see how we, how we did last year. Uh, obviously, last year with COVID and stuff, there was a, our grant income was a, a bigger percentage than, than it normally is. You know, normally, most of the funds that we operate off of are earnings from our, from our, the loans and the projects that we do, so. Um, but in this last year, you can see, if you look at the little graph, that's, you know, I like pretty pictures. So you can see that about thirty-six percent, um, of our funding came from grants. Um, that was, um, two, two, two main sources. One is the, the revolving loan fund and the other is, uh, we got funds from EDA to do that pretty twenty-six, twenty-eight page report that's in front of you for EDA CARES planning. Um, and talk a little bit about that report. Uh, that report, basically, you know, we were up here last year talking about that we were doing, uh. Uh, EDA tasked us with trying to figure out what went well and what didn't go well, um, in the COVID response. Um, immediately after, um, you know, COVID hit and, and everybody was shutting down and things were opening back up and all of that. Programs were coming out left and right. What went well, what didn't go well. And so what we did, and you'll see that in that report, um, if you care to read through the entire thing, that it kind of goes through that, you know, we did surveys, we did town hall meetings. We had, I think one of them was over in Beulah, um, you know, uh, we did across the region. We did, um, we did interviews with business owners, um, government officials, everybody that we, anybody that would talk to us about what they were seeing going on in the, in the region. And we've kind of compiled that and kind of came up with, um, what our next steps are, um, as far as that goes, what we kind of found out. You know, which programs worked well and which programs didn't. You know, we all know that, uh, the PPP kind of eventually worked well, kind of confusing upfront. The unemployment thing did not work well. And so next time, if that happens again, obviously, we have that background, that history. Uh, but then also going forward, one of the biggest things that we saw, and you'll see that, I believe, on page seventeen of that report, is where we kind of talk about our next steps. And what we're gonna be doing as an organization, um, to try to be better prepared in case there is a pandemic or a major region-wide emergency or nationwide emergency. Um, and the biggest thing is communication. One of the things that we saw that there was a lot of misinformation or disinformation or no information at all. Um, businesses would call three or four different places to get information about, where can I go for help, right? And, and you don't have time to get the runaround. You're under enough stress anyway. So trying to make sure that we have a, a network, uh, between us and the counties, um, and the cities, uh, who does what, where and when, right? So, so you guys know who to call, right? And, and if they call us and it's a program, something that's coming through you or the state. Now, our job as a regional council, obviously, um, is to try to maintain and understand as many programs as we possibly can that are coming out. And that's really what we did. I, I spent hours and hours on conference calls with state, federal officials when all that stuff was coming down. Um, and at least if we didn't know it, we at least knew how to get to it, right? Um, and, and so that access point. So one of the things we want to make sure is we're keeping that database up of who to contact, right? Who at your, who at the, at the county level, who at the city level, and then as, the near folks need to know who they can contact at our level. Um, and so that we can disseminate that information. That was one of the biggest things. Um, and then looking at some of the housing stuff, um, housing was obviously a big issue as people were losing income. How was that handled? And, you know, luckily, because of our organization, the way that we have grown, we kind of fit into all of that stuff, right? So we are kind of that one-stop shop. So anytime somebody has questions like that, um, part of the money that we get from EDA. Is to provide technical assistance, not only to cities and counties, but to, to, to businesses and, and citizens and stuff, so they can call us. And we will do the research to find out what's going on and try to help them, so. So that's, that's kind of the culmination of, of that process is that report there that's, that has gone into EDA. Um, the last thing on there is, is a little sheet that I use to send out showing what we've been up to since nineteen ninety. Nineteen ninety is kind of our pivot point because that's when we started lending. And so that's kind of where I put that, that figure in there. Um, but, uh, you can see that basically for about every dollar of contribution in match that you guys have put into the, to our organization, you get about thirty-four dollars. Um, resp- uh, return on that investment. And then we turn around and we leverage that with other federal locals, uh, and private funds to get about a hundred and twelve dollars. So, you know, overall, it's a pretty good return on investment. If you look at the blue section, that's just the regional council. Um, that's just what we do in the commercial. And then the green is the housing organization. Um, and you can see we've done a number of single-family homes. So, you know, we do a lot of down payment assistance, closing cost assistance, emergency repairs. Uh, but we've also done, um, some multifamily up in, in Mercer County as well. So, um, the, uh, the county dues that we were looking at this year are the same as they have been for the past five or so years at that point one five mil. Uh, before that, it was point two. We lowered that down because of, um, kind of, obviously, we were, uh, looking at how we. What we use these funds for is we use that for match for the EDA grants. And, and so in order to provide the technical assistance that we do to get, to access some of the grant funding that we get for revolving loan funds and stuff, we have to be. An economic development district, right? And in order to do that, we have to meet these certain criteria. And then, so the funds that you guys are funding to us with that matches that money. And then that gets, and that, so that allows us to do what we do. Um, so we certainly appreciate that. It keeps us in, in good standing with EDA. I mean, it allows us to access all kinds of capital. Like I said, we've accessed a million dollars. Um, so, you know, so over time, it, it definitely, definitely pays for itself. And like I said, you receive about a thirty-four dollar, um, return on investment in about, you know, three hundred jobs so far. So, um, continuing to grow. So that's, uh, you know, what, what we're seeing right now in, in the economy is, uh, we saw things were starting to pick up. And then now inflation hit, and so it's plateauing a little bit. Um, one of the advantages, um, with our organization is that as interest rates go up, our rates stay the same. We don't have the cost of funds that banks have. You know, we don't have to borrow money to, to loan money. And so our funds are gonna stay at that four, four and a half, five and a half percent range, right? Where it could go to six, seven, eight percent at the bank rate. So, so if businesses are still looking at expanding, we can offset some of that rate risk by bringing ours in there, right? So, um, and some of our funds are, are fairly substantial. I mean, we can get up to, we can participate in up to five million dollars if we use our SBA five oh four program. So it's not just small progress. It was, it's bigger ones as well, but we'll do that five thousand dollar one too, so. That's it. That's what we do. That's what we're up to. So, uh, open to any questions that you guys have.
We did a thirty-minute presentation in fifteen minutes.
I can go through every program, but I don't think you want to hear that, but.
No, but, uh, the only thing I, so I don't think you listed the counties you had, but the ones that are listed on board of directors, that's the ten counties that serve essentially.
Correct. That's for the regional council. Like I said, there's three separate organizations. We all worked, I'm the executive director of all three. We all worked together. Um, the regional council is, is the ten there. Um, our community, Mercer Housing, is a statewide organization. Um, it still has, you know, it still has board members. We started here, right? So a lot of the board members are from this area. Uh, I think Clayton Hoffman's still on that board, uh, from this area. Um, and then I think we have, uh, I'm trying to think who else is from this area. But most of them are from the region because it's easier than getting somebody from Fargo, having to drive in, so. And then we have many, many members that are on commit, on some of the committees, the loan committees and stuff like that too, that are not listed on there, so. But if you want to be on one of the committees, all you gotta do is call me.
Do you want to be on one of the committees?
I already am. Want to see me on Mercer County?
Ooh, I see.
Yes, right.
Good man. Glad you stepped right up there.
I, I don't remember signing up, but I remember one of the meetings.
Every, every county gets to a point, I, I don't do that. You guys do that. So every county appoints a, a person to our board.
Yeah.
That's how that works. So you were voluntold to be on the board more than likely.
Well, voluntold, yeah, I like that.
You, you got a good board to work with.
Yeah. Any questions? Thanks, Brent. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we got, um, Steve Reiser here for Dakota, Dakota Central Human Services.
Lucky you. So, Steve?
You don't have to talk as fast as Brent unless you want to. Oh, okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Can you see me again?
Must have been yesterday.
Good morning. And for the record, my name is Steve Reiser. I'm the director of Dakota Central Human Services. And I want to thank you this morning for allowing me some time on your agenda to, uh, do my statutory requirement to present the Dakota Central budget to you. Uh, first off, I have to inform you that this budget is our direct expenses and that the direct expenses are paid one hundred percent by the Department of Human Services. So as I present this budget, just be aware of that. I'm not asking any money from Mercer County, not asking for any mills from Mercer County. not asking for any mills from Mercer County, it's for like your informational. So, I'll run through it quickly. If you have a question, stop me and ask me and I'll sure answer it. But as we look at the salaries line, salaries for Dakota Central Human Service employees are going to be two percent for two thousand and twenty-three. That was what was passed by the legislature, and so that's the increase that they will get. If you go down, about two-thirds of the way down in the salary line, you see that there are two positions that are added, parent aid and a case aid. The department is confident that the legislature is going to add some positions to social services. So, they informed us that we should budget for those positions, so I did. The other area that's new in this area is on-call. We used to provide our social workers that were on-call, we would give them an hour of comp time for every day they were on-call. But now the department says we need to pay them, so we pay them fifty dollars a day. So, in order, we put that expense in there, so. And then the board expense used to be under operating expenses, but they wanted it divided out, so as kind of a new accounting method, that is added to it. Moving on to the employer share of employee benefits, the big question under this area is what's going to happen with health insurance? We know that for the first six months, our health insurance rates are going to remain the same. But come July one, we don't know what that increase is. We budgeted a twenty percent increase. I think, I hopeful that'll be enough. I'm hopeful that'll be a lot less than that. Last time we did this, we budgeted about a twenty percent increase, and we had about a point-two percent increase. So, we'll just see what happens with PERS and such. Again, there are some increases there for the new, new positions, and they were in there, too. Travel remained pretty much the same, didn't change much. Going on to page two, looking at our operating expenses, our operating expenses went down just a little bit. The big one is taking the board out of there and putting it into different areas. But we did have two areas that are new that we put in. One is for safe beds. Safe beds are usually provided to us by one or two places, either Sunrise Youth Facility in Dickinson or Youth Works in, in the Bismarck. Now, what has happened is those facilities must be accredited by the department. And then if we place children there, we pay them a per-day cost, and the cost per day is three hundred and ninety-five dollars per day. So, we put some money in there for, in case we need to use those facilities. We put some money in for drug testing. This is drug testing of clients, not of our employees or staff. We typically don't drug test in our agency. We believe that's more of a law enforcement function than a social work function. But we were required to put some money in, so we did. We got an increase for county burials. County burials are those burials that people can't afford. And so we make arrangements with local funeral home directors and we provide those services. So, what happened is our budget went from one point eight million dollars to two point one. That is significant for Dakota Central because the statute says that if you are under, if you have expenses under two million dollars, you can only carry over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in your reserve funds without having a penalty. If in fact you're at over two million dollars, then your reserve fund goes up to five hundred thousand dollars. So, it would be significant for Dakota Central. I don't think it's going to happen. I think that these expenses won't, there won't be this many expenses, but that's how the budget reads. Last year, the department asked us to deficit spend at about twenty-four thousand dollars. This year, we're looking at not deficit spending. You can see that the increase from the department for state payments is about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. If in fact we do not get those positions, my best guess is that they will claw back those dollars and we won't get near as much dollars from them. We get two payments. One comes in January, one comes in June. And they'll take that money out of the June payment, so the June payment will be significantly less than the January payment. So, as far as indirect costs, right now, the money that McLean County receives to offset our indirect costs is sufficient. And so I believe you should have gotten a check for about twenty, twenty-two thousand? Twenty-seven thousand dollars to cover indirect costs for you. That was based off of the expenses that you had in two thousand and twenty. And so now they'll start the new, new countywide cost allocation, and that will be what we would get in two thousand and twenty-three. So, just some other, that's the subject, that's the budget. If you have any questions, I'd answer those. Otherwise, I have just a couple of news things, updates about Dakota Central that you probably need to know about. Wayne has been on our board since nineteen ninety-nine. He started on the Mercer County Social Service Board, then he moved on to be on the Dakota Central Board. Obviously, Wayne will be leaving us in December. And by statute, every county that's part of a zone needs to have a county commissioner on the Dakota Central Governing Board. So, come that time, you'll have to appoint one of you to join our board. And so Wayne would surely invite you to come along as a guest if you're interested to come to one of our board meetings. But just be aware of that, come January one, or in November, December, you'll have to appoint someone to start January one. And the other news about Dakota Central Human Services is that I've submitted my resignation. My last day will be December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. So, with that, that's my report.
So, Wayne gave up, so you decided to go with him?
Yep, that's right. Wayne's not going to be around, I'm leaving.
I didn't mean it to happen, really. I really didn't.
Do I have any questions? Any questions from the board?
All I, all I can say is we really appreciate Steve for all the years of service. He made things fairly easy for the board. He's very knowledgeable and accurate on his budgets. He has pretty good foresight. He has legislative issues that he stays right on top. He just made the board and our job so much easier, and I really thank you, Steve, for the years of service. And he, again, he's served us for seventeen years, so that, that's pretty, does that sound right?
Yep, that's correct.
Yep.
And, and, you know, I have a lot of, you know, when you take on four counties, you always kind of have your favorites. And I'll have to admit that Mercer County was my favorite because Mercer County gave me my start in human services. I was hired here in nineteen ninety-two to be a social worker. So, I have worked in the social work field for thirty years. And I got my start here in Mercer County. And then when the opening came for director, I was fortunate enough to get that and moved over there. So, yeah, I've been very, it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with Mercer County and the commissioners and the staff here. I've known a lot of them. And, yeah, I'll miss it, but it's time for me to move on.
I wish you well in your new endeavors.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep. And thank you for your service.
With that, let's take a four-minute recess and we'll reconvene for the wind ordinance hearing. Yeah.
Good job.
We're done. Those are the one that we do.
My Peter.
I didn't say it's.
Yeah, you could even increase taxes if you wanted to, but.
No. No, we just, just keep going.
I mean, it doesn't, because you have, you have the next election cycle as well, or what?
Yeah, we'd have twenty-four.
Yeah, because twenty twenty twenty-four is.
Yeah, but what happens?
If it fails, then we just.
Could you do it again in twenty twenty-six anyway? Could you?
Yeah, we could keep asking.
We could keep asking, but we'd be bad for that.
Right.
In between times.
Certain at that point, until you've got it passed.
Right, yep. It would not be good. Right, so it wouldn't just be that, it would be and some. Yeah.
This one? And then here?
Yeah.
Or both of them? Do you have your cash or check?
Check. Yep, they have to pay.
Just a second, all right?
Just so you know.
Oh, you missed it. Yeah, I know, they have to pay.
That's what happens when you're out of town for.
I know, and then you're like, oh, no, that's for Sam. Got it.
Okay, I'll bring us back from recess. We have the wind ordinance hearing, so I would need a motion to recess the regular meeting and open up the wind ordinance hearing.
I move to recess our normal meeting for today and open up the wind ordinance hearing.
Okay, motion by Marv. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. We're now in our wind ordinance hearing.
Chairman and fellow board members, in reviewing the wind ordinance that I received in the mail Monday or Tuesday, I noticed a couple typos, actually three, and I think we need to review those and either approve them or not prior to our discussion. Okay? The first correction was on page one. It said three megawatt. It should have been point three megawatt. And I researched that this morning on the June first meeting of our board, so that should be correct, point three. The next correction is on page eleven. Again, minor typo, but on item three, halfway down, it says Mercer County shall be in an amount, in amount. It should say Mercer County shall, bond shall be in favor, Mercer County shall be in amount, equal to decommissioned. And the last one, this one here is kind of important. Actually, the first one and the last one are both very notable. The last one's on page fifteen, under D, please. The one that we received yesterday is, just said zero zero two. It should read point zero zero two. Difference is a whole bunch of money. So, I, I have asked our auditor to make these corrections, and she did one with the, today, with the day's date. So, I'm going to move that we accept the updated wind energy facility received August third with the three corrections included.
Okay, motion by Marv. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
Okay, so today, the rest of our hearing, we're dealing with wind ordinance that has a date on top. It says August third, two thousand and twenty-two. And we can, does anybody want to copy? We can get you one. We didn't want to give copies unless we got those three corrections approved, so we're good.
Okay.
It's all yours, boss.
All right. Todd, what, what do we have to do at this hearing?
Remind me where we're at in the procedural because I've been a little distracted having to sign my name a whole bunch of time on new complaints. I'm wondering if we're having to continue with full moon the last two and a half weeks. Well, this is our final hearing?
I don't, let me ask you this. It's a legal question. Anytime we make, actually, we're not making any changes. We're just correcting some typos, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you. That would, okay.
Yeah, so as far as having to start all over, no, these are minor typographical.
They're not changes.
Procedurally, they're not changes.
Okay.
So, it is a public hearing. Any concern or interest in citizens should be able to voice any, any concerns that they have for against neutral. any concerns that they have for against neutral. And we can proceed to finalize unless we're going to change.
So we open it to the floor here if there's any comment? Um, we take that into our thought process, if we don't make any changes, then this would be the final hearing of it?
Correct.
Okay.
But again, any comments that you've made, if these are legitimate things that should be changed, and we don't change those, that opens the door for arbitrary and capricious. So we have to hear these things from the public. No piece of legislation, whether it's at a city, county, township, state, federal level, is ever perfect. So if we see something that needs modification, we need to do that.
And I think the ones that were brought up the last time, we all considered legitimate, and we addressed those, those are in this current reading, so with that, I'll open it up to the floor if anybody wants to make comments on on the wind ordinance. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the for the public, would you please state your name, so if your buddy knows?
Keith Kessler, Glenall, North Dakota.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question, a couple questions, and on your notice on the website, it said that there was a going to be some amendments, was that your amendments? Is that what it was referring to?
That was the, I'm not sure what notice you're referring to. I did ask for some amendments, but that was, I could tell you what date it was, but that was prior to our, two meetings ago.
Okay, with with this final hearing, there was, on your website, it said there was a a request of the commissioners to to have a revision.
I'm unfamiliar with what that was on the website, so I'm not aware of any request for a revision.
Okay.
Is anybody else?
I am not.
No. Um, we made, the last time you were here, we made those revisions that you were here for, that we made at that time, so we would have posted it, but there was nothing new since that last meeting.
Yeah, the only thing new is just this this couple clerical changes that we made on it just today.
And it was basically decimals.
That helps, and I have one other question, and it's probably a mistake on my behalf, that I forgot last time until after I left here. But on your on your setbacks, number well goes under in. Number two, occupied dwelling.
What page are you on?
Four.
Page four.
Okay.
When I attended the planning and zoning meeting, they, there was some language in there, and I think this goes way back when Jessica Binder was here. There was language in there of occupied dwelling, which was very, very good language, very clear, and I'll read it. It it states occupied dwelling is where any person lives or carries on business or other calling, or which is used for overnight accommodations of persons for any duration. You know, if you just say an occupied dwelling, we had this happen to us with a developer, and they they decided, they didn't ask us what we use the property for, there was a farmstead livable, everything was there, electricity, sewer, water, the whole works. We told them that our son was going to live there when he got out of college, but anyway, they assumed that it was abandoned, and they never told the PSE, even though that place is a farmstead on a on a plat book in the whole nine yards. They decided to plant a wind tower eleven hundred feet from that, because they decided it was unoccupied. Well, this this kind of clears up a lot of that. We use that for cattle, working facilities, overnight stays, hunting cabin, et cetera, where this this would cover that. If you just have in there an occupied dwelling, there's, you're open for interpretations. I mean, if you go south in the winter for two months, is your place occupied here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but some are going to argue it's not, but.
So, did you look at page one? It says definitions occupied dwelling. Where any person lives or carries on business or other calling, which is used for overnight accommodations or persons of any duration. Is that correct then, sir?
Be under E on page one.
On E for definitions?
Yes, it is.
So that's correct, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
So it's just not in the setback area?
It just doesn't have it completely put, but it is defined in here as to what we consider an occupied dwelling.
Well, and that takes care of that.
Okay.
Unless you got something, Todd, different.
Well, just one other thing, there's checks and balances in this. We've spoke off the record, I think we share a number of a number of beliefs and opinions in common on this issue. We're more together than apart. We have with this circum, with this ordinance, if what happens, if what happened to your son's residence were to happen here, their permit to get through this commission has to go through the procedures. And therefore, you could come forward and say, hey, wait a minute, nobody's living there now, but they're going to be. And in going back and talking with people on this, it's my understanding that one of the things we were looking at is, like you said, the seasonal occupy. Our snowbirds, they don't give up occupied dwelling because they go to avoid the winters. We have a thriving tourist industry, that's a, I mean, Ag is number one in Mercer County. Tourism is getting close to there, so for our hunting and our fishing cabins and things of this sort, this definition covers it. If somebody tries to blow by that, these five people are here to address that. So if they try to pull what they did on, and I don't know what county your your son's residence was in, is that in Morton or here?
It was in Oliver.
In Oliver, okay. Well, under this this layout, if you see that happening, you come here and they can stop that, because the company wanting to build, they have to get by this five-member commission. If they're going to pull a fast and lose one, well, there's nobody living here today when we're starting construction. This board will stop it, because that's contrary to what they've passed as an ordinance. I don't know all the details of that, but that kind of dirty pool is not something that I would be in favor of. And I I've gotten in all all five commissioners, I don't think any of you would stand for such.
Thank you.
But you had a valid point, but it's covered in the front page, right?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
And I I, if I had a copy of this with, you know, I I could have probably taken care of it.
Well, you may, if you're like me, you overlook some things because you're you're reading something else, but that's okay. It's a good point to bring up.
I I can attest from all the years of practicing law, I've seen submitted Supreme Court decisions, Supreme Court briefs at a state and federal level, where a typo slips through in the final publication, so. These being corrected is a good thing. And just for a note, if we go through and we find the decimal is off someplace in the final, that can be addressed. If it's in instead of and, a classic typo, those can be resolved.
Anything else?
Thank you. That's all I have.
Perfect.
Right, I appreciate you coming in and making sure that this addresses everything we can have at address for our county.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
We do want to thank Keith for this, definitely. What happened to him is basically, he said, I don't want this to happen to another individual, and that's why he's here today. To present this, and so I really do thank you for putting that effort forth. And the board appreciates it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other people in the public want to comment? Okay, so then we would do a motion for formal adoption? Okay, is there a motion for the formal adoption?
Mister Chairman, I move that we adopt wind energy facility August, that's dated August third, twenty twenty two.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye. That concludes the wind ordinance hearing, I believe.
I just want to make one comment to the public and to everybody here. This was many months of work and discussion, misunderstanding, sharing, and I want to appreciate everybody for everything that they did to help us get this done.
Well said. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing and reopen our regular meeting.
So move, Mister Chairman.
Motion by Wayne, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marv, any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes, we're now back into regular session. Does anybody mind if we move on to Beaver? He's just going to kind of update us on economic development, I don't know if anybody needs to be here. Other than that, so Beaver, if you're ready. Thanks for coming early.
Thank you for having me. So, purpose today is, I'd like to visit with Mercer County Commission. We're going to have a lot of changes in Mercer County, and I would like to strengthen the relationship and communications between Mercer County and all our cities, but primarily Beulah. Since I'm economic development director there, but so that is my primary reason here today. We have a lot of opportunities coming to Mercer County. We have Bitcoin, we have potentially hydrogen, all different type of things are going to take and have effects, one way or the other, in Mercer County. And I feel it's important that we work together and communicate to make it the best for all our citizens. With those opportunities that are going to come, what comes with that is growth, and that growth is going to change the way all of us, we currently our current lives and the way we live here in Mercer County. And so I would like to see us to work, be able to work together to support existing businesses and promote new businesses here in Mercer County. The city of Beulah and Hazen, the mayor's and economic development directors have been looking at these opportunities for about two years now. And I feel it's important that we include the county in these discussions, because we are, we are connected to hip, we 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 share healthcare, police, budgets, finances, those are all things that we, as a group, need to work together to help all of our citizens in Mercer County. And I think opening communications with this commission and our city councils and commissions and planning and zoning and our P and Z boards are of the utmost importance. You know, combining our, having our P and Z boards just communicate together and and, you know, what's going to happen to our ET zones with growth? If even a percentage of the things that are being proposed come to fruition, Beulah could, if it's a two percent growth rate, or ten percent, or a hundred percent, that's going to affect Mercer County and 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 all the local cities around them. And it's important that we know, you know, at least attempt to have a plan on how we take and address this. It's going to affect all of our infrastructure and how our budgets are determined in in our county and at a state level. So Mercer County is rich in assets. We have coal, power plants, agriculture, sand mines, carbon capture, tourism. Today, we talked about tourism. Tourism brings two hundred and thirty-plus jobs annually to Mercer County and over nineteen million dollars. That's how big tourism is to Mercer County, and we don't promote it. We we don't address it as a as a county and a city's as important as it is. One of our huge assets that nobody even considers is our availability of water. It's, that is one of the roadblocks in most states and jurisdictions, transmission lines. We're the core for transmission lines in the state, access to rail and interstate systems, and we're industry friendly. That's the main reason why industry is looking to come here and locate in North Dakota and in Mercer County. We've had numerous conversations with attorney, assistant, lieutenant governor, pardon me, and he reassures me, continues saying, Mercer County has everything they need to be the nucleus for the state of North Dakota. We have our rail lines, we have power, we have water, all the things like Watford doesn't have a rail system. You know, so we have what we need to be a main state here in in our state. We're all going to, we have, every community in this state and other states has the same three challenges, and that's workforce, daycare, and housing. Those are things that we need to work on, not only at a city level, but also on a county level. In Mercer County, we face an additional challenge that most states and cities don't, and that's the media and public perception. We will continue to fight that with our fossil industry, but through education and through the growing of our state economy, our our baseload and our peak demand will continue to support our coal mines and our coal-fired power plants. There are numerous new technologies that are being proposed, be located here in Beulah, or Beulah, in Mercer County. And there are, it's new technology that we've got world players are coming here to take and make investments, because they have to do with battery and how batteries are made, and that, those rare earth minerals are found in coal. So it's a, I see our coal industry being alive and well for a long time in the near future, along with our power plants. Growth will impact our infrastructure, our budgets, our roads, law enforcement, healthcare, parks, it has probably impacted all aspects of our lives that we currently know today. Having a plan according to all aspects of our county will only benefit the citizens of the county. I would propose that each of our cities, the county, and our P and Z boards appoint an individual or individuals to meet on a regular basis and to, at the very least, communicate, but more importantly, put wheels in motion to create a plan moving forward to best serve Mercer County as a whole, including the cities. Working together will benefit our smaller communities, plus enhance amenities in our county. Our smaller cities get left out on a lot of stuff, just because they don't have the finances and ability to take and do a lot of things. So as a county, if we can take and and cities incorporate them, if it's small things like advertising, including them on tourism magazines, those type of things, those are all things that benefit our county and benefit those smaller cities. I guess I would ask if if this commission at some point could consider this, appoint some individuals. I'd be more than willing to spearhead, probably through McGead, maybe the right organization, but to put together a group that met on a regular basis to discuss what the potential opportunities are coming, what growth looks like, how do we expand in our county and in our cities? And with that, I thank you for letting me speak.
Just to reiterate some of the stuff Beaver talked about, Beaver is the chair of Mercer County Economic Development. I believe Gene is the portfolio holder for us on that.
That's correct.
So that's essentially the entity that would kind of start this, is is my assumption. Or it already kind of has, but.
McGead, McGead went silent for many years, and we just started getting back together and COVID hit. And since then, we have not been, we've not been active like we should be, and if it's McGead or if it's a different organization, I I just feel that this communication needs to happen. Just about on a daily basis, I run into issue where communication fails between parties. And so if we had that ability and just a plan, our Beulah has to start moving forward and redefine their comprehensive plan, because again, two percent growth, ten percent, if some of the numbers, even fractions of them happen that we've been told, and you know, we're told this, we have to work with the information we have, just the city Beulah could see a thousand or two thousand workers a day in the city Beulah. Whether it happens, I can't tell you, but that's what I've been told, so. And that affects, that affects all the cities and Mercer County.
Question for you, Beaver. What you're asking for is that, and I'm putting in my words what I thought I heard, okay? Sometimes it just needs to interpret it. But kind of like, we'd like to formulate a strategic plan that includes all county entities, county and cities, all of them.
That's correct.
And communicate back and forth. Do you have? And communicate back and forth. Do you have a shoot-from-the-hip idea? How many people you would want to and how we would develop that strategic plan?
I would, as far as I know, Beulah and Hazen are only two economic development directors, but with their council and commission's approval, if their mayors could sit on this and economic development, and then I'd like to mayor for each one of our cities, at least to start with, and then from Mercer County Commission. Those should be the leaders of each one of those entities, or at least be able to come back and report, report back to their councils or commissions. You know, if we, if, if we see a 10% increase in population in our county and 10% increase in our road use, that's gonna make a huge difference on everybody's road maintenance budget. Those, those are all the things that, you know, not everything's gonna happen, but something will happen, and the better off we are out in front of it. When it, when we're told it's gonna happen, we're gonna be two years behind from when we should have started.
I agree, I agree with you completely. So, I, again, I jogged down what I thought I heard. You said the mayors from each city, I totally agree with that. I also wrote down, and the economic developers, of each one of those cities. And the county representation, they formed a committee, so to speak, might be the wrong word, to start moving this forward and get everybody aware of what's the possibilities are and what the needs might be and where we could go. Now, we presently have Gene, I believe, that could serve. In my opinion, we might want two county commissioners. What's your thoughts?
I, I wouldn't mind having all there. I mean, it's, I mean, it's just...
Can I throw in a legal wrinkle?
Yep.
We like wrinkles.
I'm earning more of them. You put two commissioners on that economic board, one commissioner shows up, you now have a quorum. I would recommend one commissioner, because not, none of the mayors, not the commissioner who's on there, none of them can give a final say for their board that they're, they're representing without the board. We put two on, we create an issue that, folks, don't make me, don't, don't make me get my iron out to round, to iron those wrinkles out, please.
Let me ask a question, Todd. Presently in our planning and zoning, we have two commissioners on there. And if another commissioner shows up or wants to be there, thus far, it hasn't, I'm not arguing with you, but I'm just telling you that's what we're experiencing right now. It hasn't been a, a problem if they'll communicate with each other and just two of them be there. But, but, the only reason I, I was thinking of two is that when you have diversity, sometimes you get new ideas.
Well, and here's the thing, you've got a representative on that particular committee board, whatever you wanna call it, that can bring not just their own thoughts and ideas, but the thoughts and ideas of all of you. That's the reason you have that representative there. We start adding the numbers, then all of a sudden, we have a commissioner show up, they make discussions, and this is a great idea. You've got a quorum that just said, this is a great idea, so now it comes before the commission, and it looks like a stacked deck to somebody on the outside looking in. My advice to avoid legal wrinkles or actual legal issues and problems. One, it should be the same with zoning, with this, these are good ideas. But that person, and when they come to these meetings about what are we gonna do with what we're seeing possibly coming in in the near future, we don't want anything that, okay, well, we've had this meeting here and it's a done deal when they get here.
There's nothing wrong with, we're just tossing ideas and thoughts around.
And if it goes through Maged, those are public meetings that handle, which would have publications, so if three of us did attend, we're just attending a public hearing that's already been happened.
Right, but if you're discussing period, then I don't want you to go in.
Couple other things, I mean, you went through a good list. We didn't talk about CO2, sequestering, I mean...
I thought I did, it's on my list.
Okay, it's on your list, but I didn't hear.
He did mention CO2.
Oh, did he?
Okay.
He just briefly brushed it.
Yep.
Just brushed it, okay.
So maybe he knows a little more, though.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is that with the list, there's other things, but what we saw this spring around our frost laws.
Right.
I think that's going to be something that happens more and more often. We need to have some type of formal process established before next spring.
Yeah.
So that, if, I shouldn't say if, if and when, probably when those applications come in, we have kind of a standardized process.
That we utilize for everybody.
That we utilize for everybody, whether it's, you know, whatever.
You're 200% right. It will happen. There's, it's, yeah, happens every year, so, yeah, but...
But I guess at this point, since Gene is kind of the portfolio holder on the economic development, that would be where we would start the communication. A lot of these meetings that Beaver had talked about, when I was serving as the mayor, I was in that entity, so at, at that point, we had two, so along with kind of what's been brought up, having two assigned, depending on how things shake up in the election, we might wanna hold just one at this point, and then proceed accordingly.
And Maged is, although each of the cities is supposed to have a representation, its core was to meet with power plants, coal mines, large industry, to discuss what was going on. That is very, very important. The Maged board may wanna stay that way, and if they do, then I would be looking at a different group that was more for the county and the cities. Not saying that the businesses shouldn't be involved, but I think that we have a list of issues that we need to address.
Right.
And what they bring to the table is important, but we need to address our own issues as government entities also.
And, and just to, I, I did catch what, I believe what Beaver was mentioning, he talked about road systems. That's always been my, my little pet. Mercer County, I'll emphasize it again, Mercer County's a moving county. We always were and we always will be. And your county is only as good as, as your system that you have in place. And you start to neglect certain things and stuff. The thing is, we got nursing homes here, we have hospitals here. People off the farm are working constantly in town, so we're, we're a county that's always been on the move. But you touched it pretty, pretty hard. The road system, don't, don't overlook that, that particular system, because it costs a lot of money today, but that's, that's the key of, it's like the semi that hauls our freight back and forth. He's the key man that makes economics, you know? So I'm glad you mentioned that, Beaver.
And just based on your numbers, a 10% increase in population in the county would be 850 to 900 people. I mean, that's, that's the Golden Valley, Zap, and Stanton combined.
Combined, yeah.
And that's a lot of housing that needs to be built, because our current housing, although you hear that there's a lot of houses on the market, that's, you have to put that in perspective. A lot of those houses are not saleable or don't meet the, the main demand out there. So if there's 800, maybe you can fill 100, but 700 are gonna have to be new construction or some type of multifamily type construction.
How do you recommend we move forward to get this, I'll use the word committee, organized?
If, if this commission is willing, I would be more than willing to sit down and put an outline together and get it to you for approval, and I, with approval, I could send it to each of the mayors of each of the cities and see if that's something that everybody could embrace and wanna be part of.
I agree. I'd like to see that occur, if you're willing to do that.
I will.
Excellent. So you had a, described a problem, and then you brought along a solution. That's kind of unusual.
It's appreciated.
No, I appreciate you listening to me today, and like I said, it's, it's all about what we need to do to benefit our county and our cities, so.
And I like the idea of having a strategic plan, so we have a direction ahead of the game.
Yeah, I'd like to stay ahead if we possibly can, so.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Beaver.
Thank you.
Kind of like you mentioned, it's kind of more or less after the election, then you'll have whatever board is gonna be here, and...
We'll know better.
You'll know better, yeah.
We're right on time today.
Yeah, we're even slightly ahead.
Doing really, doing really good.
The other ones kind of are hurdles, but we'll see.
Yeah. Well, since the other one's a hearing, we can't move that up, so we'll, we'll recess until 11:45.
What?
It's gonna look for the treasurer's report, I wrote those numbers on it, where's my normal revenue?
From today?
Can I go back to my stack? Do you notice Alice bringing in sheets of the budget? I don't, or I don't think so.
I think she went over to see if Sam and Gwen had them all done.
Cause I would like copies of, I didn't see anyone in the office, so. It must be running to a secret.
Probably, it's under a lot of personal pressure.
Yeah.
And in fairness, I just postponed this and had another meeting so we can take it home on digestion.
I, I'm actually probably gonna, I need to.
When do you need the...
Thank you. I, I process things so slow that that's the only way I can digest it, you know?
When do you need the, for the, for the approval by analysts, that's...
10th.
10th.
We have a week from today, right? Or is it tomorrow or something?
Today's the 3rd.
No, today's the 3rd. Yep, it's a week from today. Yep.
There's another one right here.
There's, I wrote.
July, so what I'm saying is that this sheet that I gave you is already incorrect.
Right. Yep, because some stuff had to be adjusted.
No. The only thing that's missing is the July receipt of 795,000 isn't on this sheet, I don't believe. Yes, it is.
I thought it was.
Yep, that one, 590, that includes last year.
That's both of them together.
I knew it was coming, so I put it on.
Yep.
The reason I wanted to bring this up is when we do our budget, this is non-normal revenue, right? It's not part of the, your normal revenue, tax, whatever.
To me, that's marked for like special projects, if we wanna get special things taken care of, and probably won't have them again here.
Exactly. So I, I'll just use one, it's my own bit, airport route.
Okay.
But not saying we're gonna do that, I'm just saying that as an example. So with what you just said, I totally agree with you. The way I see we do the budget, we don't, not a quorum, so we're okay, is that these should not be part of the budget monies. When we get done with the budget, we can say, now, how do we wanna apply this towards any extra costs or projects?
So have those set aside and then go through, this one is a real special project, you know, it's not gonna come up again. It's not gonna be a continuous thing that we're gonna have to be dealing with year by year by year. Is this one that we would wanna apply ARPA monies to then?
Right.
So we can get it, because we have the monies for it, but we know it's not gonna keep coming back and hitting us, and we have to come up with the monies every year for it.
Exactly right. Now, this, these monies are in our general fund. So, the words that I've used in the past, it inflates the value of our general fund, which is supposed to be our normal revenue.
So it looks different to others.
So, so if we take this out of the general fund, make our budgets where everything balanced, and maybe we don't have enough, we don't know, we might have to put some in there, but we would be able to, we'd know where we're at. So that's where I was going with this. I'll just share, I'm glad you...
No, I, like you said, and that's why I felt like we should use it on like the HVAC system and stuff like that, cause that's not something that we're gonna need every year and stuff like that, or like the cells for the landfill, we're not gonna need those every year all the time. So that's why I felt it was appropriate to use those for that, because it's not an annual cost that we're gonna incur all the time.
The deal with the cell, that I checked with the DACO, because we're gonna get audited on these monies.
Yep.
And can we or cannot use it, we want some reliable source to tell us yes, and he said...
Yeah, he said, he said we could, so it was appropriate for it.
And that's another reason to pull these out of there, because we don't arbitrarily just assume that we can use it for that.
Right, we have to make sure and verify that it qualifies for what we need it to.
Yeah, okay, we're good. So what was our meeting, 11:45?
Correct.
Boy, that got here fast.
I was saying, wow.
Let's see what tends in, so are we talking as long?
I was asking Darby and Don if they're, what a good time, Darby's, you know, open house was today, which is 2:00. I'm like, oh, so I'll just see if the hearing goes long enough to, so I don't have to make a trip back.
Gosh, I sure don't, I sure don't want it to. But you know, if it does, my wife is gonna drive her with the other vehicle, if it doesn't, I have to drive home and get her to go back. But you gotta figure it's half hour there and half hour back.
Yeah, it's not quick, you know?
From where we live, it's, it's a good John Topper here.
It is, yep.
And if you get behind the firemen, like, heaven forbid, like a big splatter.
Yep, it'll be even longer.
Did I get more paper request while I walked up?
No, that's mine. Yours or mine?
No, I wrote it, mine, it sounded like...
This yours or mine?
That's got it completely different, cause it says the 29th, and mine's got scribbles on there.
Yeah, mine's got scribbles too. Yours, it's got hole punch, so I think it's yours.
That's where it's going.
Figure it out later.
My guess, so you may.
You know, it's always so...
Yeah, she's coming.
Public input sometimes. You see Mr. Hester come in twice.
I don't...
And the stuff he brought was wonderful.
Yep.
You know, that he had us like look at, like, I'll make perfect sense.
Liza mentioned the definition, I was there, I was gonna get it, but there are definitions.
Sounds like it. All right, we'll reconvene the county commission meeting, and then I need a motion to close that again and open up the preliminary budget hearing.
I move to recess our regular meeting and open up the preliminary budget hearing.
Motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Wayne?
I would I.
I would I. That motion passes, we're now in the preliminary budget hearing. So on that agenda, there's the budget hearing date and time. Must be between September 7th and October 6th.
But the preliminary budget has to be approved by...
By August 10th.
August 10th, yes.
It's right here. It says preliminary budgets must be filed with the county auditor by all local governments.
By August 10th, correct?
Yep.
Correct.
So on that thought, I have some other stuff I wanted to bring up with this meeting, but on that thought, well, let me share what I wanted to bring here first, cause we might, yeah, move to that first. What I handed out today to you guys is, it shows the state ARPA money that we have on the book, on balance. It shows the state ARPA money that we have on the balance. And the first one is, shows how much we received. And this I can verify. This is all verifiable. I got the money from the state. I got a copy of that sheet here, what monies we received. Okay, the state ARPA money was transferred right into township loans as it should have been. So that's, it's in our township loans, should stay in. Okay? I don't see any concern with that at all. The federal ARPA money, we have committed, I think my numbers are correct, but we have committed some 251,000 plus to the landfill and a little over a million to building improvements. So that gives us the balance of 328,929. That money is in our general fund. The COVID money, and this should be verified by someone, hopefully it's the auditor. I know they've been extremely busy and it was brought up, but... In other words, I trust my work, but you always want to verify. Okay, the COVID money, as I see it, this, all the money that we received today is 1.3 million. I'm quite certain, I'm accurate, because I have that from the state also. We've committed 500,000, best of my knowledge, we've committed 500,000 to cyber. At a board meeting on 12/16/20, we approved giving to the cities 123,691.89. And I have a worksheet from Shannon that shows our actual county costs for cyber, for COVID costs, 641. That gives us the balance in there of 707,561.50. So if you add those two amounts together on the right-hand side, we have just barely over a million dollars of non-normal revenue that resides in our general fund. My interpretation, and I hope someone else echoes this, non-normal revenue should be not... Let me start over. Our normal revenue, our normal revenue received from taxes and state aid should meet our state, our normal expenses. Non-normal revenue should be used for special purposes, typical expenses that might come up only once. And the way I would like to see it or suggest is that we take, when we do our budget, we remove these amounts from our general fund so that the amount in our general fund is real, normal revenue only. And we make our budget so that our normal revenue covers our normal expenses. If by chance it does not, we look at these funds to...
Assist, supplement.
Assist it, supplement it. Normally, we should not have to, but I'm just saying. But let's just say we do our budget, everything, our general fund, we take these out of the general fund because it's not normal revenue. Our normal revenue covers our normal expenses. Now we can allocate these funds, the remaining balance, to whatever projects we deem are most pertinent for our county.
Then we'd have to take out the expenses that we probably use for these as well. Because if it's a non-normal expense, under your same statement, non-normal income.
I'll just give an example, and this isn't the only one, there's other ones. Let's just say we wanted, we had, we want to do the airport road. That's a one-time thing, other than maintaining it. It would benefit the county. We would use non-normal revenue for a non-normal, one-time expense, and they would cover each other. That's just an example. There's many others. We've already allocated some to the landfill and building improvements. Those are not normal expenses. It's something that we had the money available, they were necessary, and we allocated it towards that. And that's what I'd like to do with the remainder of it also. So that's all I handed out. I just gave you guys a copy of what I see is in our general fund that when we see the end-of-year projection for 2022 of our general fund, this money should be removed from that. So we know what money we have available for 2023 and do our budget accordingly.
And like Travis said, make sure we have those expenses taken out from that too? So that those can be in a separate category as well.
Exactly.
They need to be shown that they're not in. But then when we finalize, they have to be line items within the budget.
Mm-hmm.
So that...
But it'll just help us clearly think through what we need to do for the budget.
Correct. Okay, so that was my thoughts and why I wanted to share that with you. And that's all I have regarding non-normal revenue. Samantha's here, so go ahead.
So the amount that you have allocated to the landfill, I have the minutes here, and it's actually 292,733.10.
292...
733 and 10 cents. So that leaves us with just under, or about roughly 290,000.
Okay.
And then that is in its own account. Now, when we go down here to the state...
That's in a fund 2125 or something like that, 2104?
2125, I believe here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that one, and then that remaining originally was supposed to be allocated for new software.
Okay, repeat that again. The COVID, remaining COVID money?
The 290?
The remaining ARPA, federal ARPA. After it was the allocation to the landfill and then the allocation to the building improvement, it was discussed that the rest was going to go to the new software.
The reason I smiled is because that was discussed, but the actual decision was not...
Right, so there, I don't believe that there is any confirmation on where that's going.
Correct.
This state COVID funds, so this 398,765.94 was transferred into the general fund. And we couldn't find these transactions in December and January of where, what you have listed here.
Oh, I have them. You want the revenue, you mean, for COVID? Is that what you're talking about?
These 120, this 123 payment and the 133?
Those were revenues, not payments.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant, the revenue.
Yeah, I have that with me. That came from the state. If you look up the state website, it shows you those. And I have them with you, and I'll give them to you.
Okay, we'll have to do research then in our books on where that would...
Oh, absolutely.
Most of the place.
Do you mind if I just bring this over?
Yeah, go ahead.
I look this up occasionally. This is sorted by fund and also by year. So we're going to have to look for COVID relief funds. This year's were old, this year's were old funds, so that's different than what's on here. If you look through these, I don't know what you'll see along here. Let's see if I can find it really quick. It's not jumping out at me. This year was some old, that I did see might not have that. This is old information. I'm going to take those off now when I view them. This is where it came from the state. But you're going to look it up on the state website regarding state treasures?
Well, we're going to have to double-check from the state website and with our entries.
If we're matching, yeah.
Absolutely. You'd hope so.
I know. Going to need to hicka, oh, a wrinkle, oh, is that a word, wrinkle?
And the website said we were supposed to get this, but they said, well...
Right.
Right.
That's 20...
I doubt that happens.
21.
Same days I have on here, but I think...
Okay. So those two, I'm still, I'm still going to have to figure out where that's at, so. And it could have possibly just went back into the general fund because after, like I said, November, that's when it was decided for the remaining balance to go into the general fund.
I suspect, and that's what I mentioned, is that it's most likely where it is.
Right.
But you come back, and like I said, verification is really good.
Which of counties this morning, I realized that I just have too many questions myself to be able to present what I have to you guys. So I have another meeting with her after lunch today. And she's going to, I kind of walk through everything with me. And then I'm just hoping that I can ask for your understanding and use the time that I have until later this week or the beginning of next week to present it and we can discuss it. I didn't want to, you know, ask for a special meeting, but I think at this point, that's where I'm leaning to.
We've already talked about that might be the best way to go.
So I didn't...
Even if we had everything today, take time to adjust it and process it, still have a meeting to discuss it.
Right, and I want to be prepared for you guys too and have the best, you know, so I can help you guys understand it fully also, so.
So we're looking at, the deadline is August 10th, is that correct?
Correct.
So when, because you're doing the work, you want to get it to us, and we want a little bit of time. I want at least one day at home where I can digest it.
Right.
So what do you, when do we recommend to have a meeting? Before the 10th?
What I'm hoping to do is I'm hoping to have something sent to you guys or given to you guys by the end of this week. So you have the weekend to look over it, and then we can meet again Monday, Tuesday, or if you guys want to meet the end of the week and then the beginning of the week. I understand that that's, you know, cramming a couple of days into your schedule, so.
Where I sit, I would recommend that we do it Monday, it's due on the 10th. And if we don't resolve everything on Monday, we would have a few minutes on the 9th to resolve a question that we might take back to you and you to answer us. So I would recommend Monday, if that works for you.
Yep.
But...
I'm thinking Monday myself, I'm just looking here.
And no apology necessary. We understand that this takes a lot of work.
Thank you.
Well, and I appreciate you taking the time to make sure that you're getting all the accurate information to us. So we aren't coming back going, what do you mean? Thank you, I really appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'm flexible Monday, so.
Do we need a motion for a special meeting?
Yeah.
I move that we hold a special meeting for discussing our preliminary budget Monday, August 8th, 9:00 a.m.
Okay. Motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
They never pass the first time, usually there's a time change or something, but...
Any discussion? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. So that's basically another preliminary budget hearing?
Yep.
Correct?
Yep, you're correct, yeah.
And we still, so we have that taken care of. But then looking at the agenda of the budget hearing date and time, I'm assuming that's our final budget.
October...
Between September 7th and October 6th.
Correct, that's the final, right? So if we needed to amend anything from now till then, we have a little bit of time to make some adjustments to it.
Yeah, we can make adjustments after we approve the preliminary.
Correct, correct.
But then we still have to, we have to set a date for the final.
Correct.
Final.
Tabby, hearing. We don't have to approve it then, but we have to have a hearing on it.
Yes.
We could do it on a regular meeting, which would be the 7th and the 21st of September. I'd rather do it sometime in September.
I think we should do it in September, so that way we got it...
We got time to make changes.
Yep.
We already have it set here on reveal.
Well, I mean, those were proposed, but...
We're going to approve this, so...
Oh, okay. So we have a formal hearing on October 5th at 10:30? Okay, that's a regular meeting.
Does that work with you, or do you want to do it earlier than that?
I mean, we can have, I mean, that's our, that's our hearing.
That's the final decision?
I would have one, just like this meeting prior to, so that...
Yeah.
I would too.
Maybe like the 21st.
I'd say the 21st, maybe.
Yeah.
At our, we have a meeting on the 21st already, anyway. I think we should have it on...
Have a final hearing?
Yeah.
And then...
September, you're thinking 21st?
September 21st. And then at that meeting, if we have comment or we need changes.
We still have our cushion meeting, pretty much.
Cushion meeting, yeah.
If we need to make a judge amendments.
Okay.
So that wouldn't be a hearing, that'd just be a meeting?
Correct, because the hearing would be heard and then that would allow people to...
So on the agenda for September 21st, we want to put down final budget meeting?
Correct. Final budget hearing.
Hearing, that would be the hearing in case somebody comes in and wants something adjusted or something different. And then we would actually do the final budget decision on October 5th.
Because we'll put the public notice then for the September 21st, because that's when, if we have any outside opinion...
So October 5th would be the hearing, would be the...
It would be the final budget meeting.
Meeting, take hearing right there.
But we should have a, we should have a motion for that. So that it's formal and that we can publicize it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we schedule a final budget hearing for September 21st at our regular meeting. And...
At what time?
They pick a time on the agenda. I'm thinking, I don't know, I don't pick times on the agenda. Usually it's 11 o'clock or something like that.
Well, we have to set the time.
Okay, what time do we have this one? 11:30 a.m.?
11:30?
Yes, I have to pick a time, I'll pick it.
Motion by Marv to have the final budget hearing on September 21st at 11:30 a.m. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Anything else on the preliminary budget hearing portion of this? If not, then I would take a motion to close the public budget hearing and we'll reconvene the normal meeting again.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. I believe that concludes everything we have on our agenda. So we have a special meeting on the 8th at 9:00 a.m. to rediscuss preliminary budget. And our final meeting is, our final hearing is... Seeing no further business, meeting adjourned.
Just remember, I think I have another meeting with the... No, it's the 10th, we're going to...